Hello everyone, welcome back to the madness, the voracious, the insatiable, the glorious power of Power Rangers Centurion. It is Wednesday and after a beautiful, long con weekend, it's nice to get back into the swing of our regular streams. I hope that everybody that tuned in enjoyed the Rise of Silver, the two-episode kind of mini canon event where we got to meet Ellie and find out how they got their Power Ranger powers. One thing to note is as a Silver Ranger, they are a sixth Ranger that won't be in every episode, but they have a lot of background information that's going to be very useful as the Rangers unravel the lore. And Power Rangers Centurion for Centurion Ridge. I'm John McDonald and I am the GM also of the Power Ranger Podcast, which we are working hard on the second half of Season Two. Get out to you on the YouTube, so keep your abs on our social media for that. I'm also the GM for the limited Friday Night Series Summer School, where someone said, "Hey, John, do you want to run a thing with zombies?" And I'm like, "Yeah, I'm gonna run a weird thing with zombies." And low and behold, on Friday nights currently, there are zombies. So come and join us this Friday for zombies. And that is... I also do Sunday Nights Call of Cthulhu. We have our final Call of Cthulhu game on the 25th, I believe, which is, Isabelle's trying so hard to rein me in and my character just off the rails and complete insanity. But it's not really about me, it's about everyone else. As people introduce themselves, I will give a little memory pop so you remember where you are and what's potentially important to you. But before we do that, Isabelle, do you want me to pause? Yes, we can do that. Yeah, of course. Hello everyone, welcome back to Power Rangers Centurion. As I said, pre-introduction, pre-content warning, I'm going to give everybody a bit of a memory so everybody is jogged to where we are, hopefully, and then we're going to begin today's adventure. And I'm gonna start with the person on the farthest left of me as I see in the Discord. We're gonna go with Eric, Eric who has spent, who has valiantly, valiantly battled Hurricane Debbie and violently battled the crowds to so many dice at Gen Con. Hi Eric.
Hey, how are you? Yeah, I fought off the plague in Mother Nature to get back to Florida. So yeah, I'm Eric, I'm with Norse Foundry. I'm tired, but I'm here and I play Alex, Black Ranger. And I honestly have no idea what happened last time because it was a month ago and I don't remember what I had for breakfast.
That's fair. I will say, for you, the most important thing for your character is you were really the only Ranger that wasn't affected by the manipulated video after the Halloween park. Your thing is that you keep having the dreams about being in Star Wars, I guess more or less, like you're on like a spaceship and you keep hearing this chord of music.
Oh yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I tried to fly the ship or something.
You did. I, you did succeed, but you also did have to wake up from that dream at some point. The Schwartz was with you for all you baseball fans. That's kind of your big thing personally. Also, someone called the Emperor is apparently the, the problem? And that is, that is about the extent of what you know. I will say, you are getting better at playing the chord. If you'd like to give me a performance roll to see how well you're doing, I can tell you if you've learned anything about the chord. And it's not when you're playing before the Lord or anything like that. We're not doing a, not doing a broken hallelujah thing, something else.
Uh, yeah, no, I failed. I got a six. I'm in my best skill.
It's, it's, I will actually give you this with the six. It shouldn't be too difficult, as difficult to play. It's not the most complex chord you've ever heard. But for some reason, trying to play it, like your fingers can't seem to reach the, the strings correctly in order to like reproduce it in the way you want to. I don't know how much that frustrates you, but that's what you're going through this morning. And we're gonna move right along to, we'll move around to John Blair who has, I don't know if you want to make the exciting announcement today about the thing happening for you? Or if you want to hold on to that, but it's your floor, John, the other John, both Johns, all Johns, all Johns all the way down.
Well, I would assume it's me because if you were introducing another John, you would be introducing yourself. And I feel like that would be confusing for the people watching. But yes, my name is John Blair. You are watching me on Power Rangers Centurion. Thanks for being here. You can also find me on the lovely Power Rangers Podcast, it's Brooke Kerrigan. I do have something brewing with the Shadows of Nox in the world of heroes that bend the elements. So if you know anything about the world of Avatar, the Last Airbender, I am working on a game for that, that will probably be out sometime in October. But there, that is news for another day. Other than that, I'm here and I'm happy. And my dream was about trying to save our boy Freddie and I think I failed in that dream. And then everyone hates us now. And so that's so sad.
Yes, the two, the two bear not be related, but you are correct. You're kind of the most visceral thing for you right now. You do keep having the memory about fire. But here's the thing. It's not always Freddie that's there. It's various like people that you've met. They all have the same problem Freddie has, where they're all gooey. But no matter what you try in the dream, if you've been trying, I assume you've been trying. I don't want to speak for you, but no matter whatever happens, you never make it out of the fire before you wake up. It just seems to be the cycle of doom.
Do parts of me continue to burn off? Am I losing a lot of, do I have a lot of burnt off patches of hair?
No, you like regenerate, like you wake up and it kind of smells like barbecue wee in your room, but nothing is like burning or anything. You just can't ever seem to escape this fire.
That's great. I love that.
I mean, it's not, it's not fun. I'm not gonna lie. But that's okay, because it's all part of the rich lore. Speaking of the rich lore, I'm actually gonna go, I'm gonna go to Link. Hello, welcome. If you are ready.
I'm as ready as I will be. See, that tells you, that tells you how bad it is right now. I just woke up, actually, you know, night shifts kind of have a weird sleeping arrangement compared to other people. Anyway, I'm Grim. I'm playing Link today, the Red Ranger. You can catch me on Season Three of the podcast, once it comes out as Green Ranger. I am currently running, being villainous. And it's airing every other Thursday on Shadows of Nox. Episode One is already aired. You can check it out on YouTube. Episode Two, I believe, is next week? Isabelle's can say for sure. She's, she's the one who's doing the broadcast for me. Thank you so much. And I hopefully have something coming up in October that will be livestreamed. People should look forward to it. I'm gonna be running a slightly older system that is very spoopy themed and hopefully people enjoy it. Right, I have reprised my role as Lucky in Fallout and Lucas G Variety. We played yesterday and I very much enjoyed being my happy-go-lucky boy who everybody thinks is a ray of sunshine that needs to be punched. It's so great.
We tried to raid you last night after Stormlight and it didn't work because I don't know anything about raiding, but we tried. We tried real hard after our Stormlight Q and A to raid you guys and I just, I don't know how to.
It's okay. We had some issues at one point where the stream went down on its own, so you might have been trying to raid at that point. But we'll be picking that up again soon. And I very much enjoy my naive vault boy. I think that's it for me.
That is, that is it for you as Grim, our, our friend Grim. But as for you, Link, you keep having, do you remember the ninja dream you were having? Where like, the, like, the thing was that the person that was talking, you're the, like Sensei guy on the top of the hill.
Yeah, right. Link was talking about, it's a, it's a destiny dream.
Yes, it's a destiny dream. Here's the thing, you're continuing to have it and you always end up on like, on the top of the mountain. But the like, Sensei, Mr. Miyagi guy keeps asking you very pointed questions about if you want to be in charge, if you want to be strong. Like, like it's starting to feel like a, like a, like an Instagram ad for steroid use a little bit? Because the questions always come back to, you want to be strong? You think you can do this alone?
No, I don't, I don't think I can do this alone. I'm not not good enough. And that's okay, for now.
The Sensei's face always drops when you say that and you always kind of wake up after. I will say another thing that is kind of an issue. Actually, there's, actually there's two, there's just one you don't know about. The issue that you do know about is the manipulated footage that was on TV that keeps getting played over and over again. It's pretty personal for you because part of that manipulated footage is the angle of the battle you had against the sentient lions in front of the Historical Society. It makes it look like you shot one of the lions, which you had like a pretty deep connect, connect and joy to. So I don't know about.
Lefty.
Yeah, lefty. So I don't know if that's bugging you, but they are definitely maligning your name without knowing they're maligning your specific name.
It's very sad. It's very sad. Lefty's, Lefty's my buddy. He was the one who was missing the, the front left paw. That's why he got the name Lefty.
It's true. They should have given him like a, like an iron paw to go with it, just gone full, full Luke Skywalker. We digress. Let's move over to Katie who plays the Baptist Leia McKenzie. Katie, welcome.
Hi, I'm back. I'm pretty sure I missed more than anybody else in the last few months. Because I've been doing plays and shit. But I'm back and yeah, so I play Leia McKenzie here and I'm also gonna be on the finale of Cthulhu on the 25th. And then I can find me Tuesdays and Saturdays on D and Denial, which I just played with at Gen Con. It was very, very fun. We get to do an actual play, which is great. And I got to do my, my module that I'm writing with my kiddo for eight total strangers. So that was super fun. But yeah, so if I'm not here, I'm probably, the next thing I'm doing is an opera. So, you know, something like that. That's what I do.
Well, your life does kind of, it's kind of fitting because your life kind of feels like an opera. Because people think that you blew up two buildings consecutively. Because the manipulated footage makes it look like you blew up not just the Toeflo factory, but also attempted to blow up the, no, you did blow up the radio station. Because they manipulated the footage from the TV station to make it look like while you were there in the radio station alone, you blew up the radio station. Which by the way, the radio station is still there. You checked. So people aren't doing their research. The other part of it is Goldar from Angel Grove apparently came to personally harass you. And you have not seen Goldar since, but the coin with the black edges is still in your possession. Unless you've done something with it. But it's, it all just kind of seems to be lots of questions, not as many answers as you'd like to have.
Sounds about right.
Also, I will say for you, specifically because I think you were the one that noticed this actually, the kids at the Halloween park, which is last episode we had. They were very like, the adults were real excited. It was obvious you were walking into a trap. You all kind of had accepted that. The kids didn't seem to care about the Halloween park at all. Just especially for people that are from Centurion Ridge. It's kind of weird that the kids were like, "Centurion Ridge Halloween Park, yay." Like it was, it was very weird and monotone. It was very strange.
Okay, yeah. I do remember that now that we're thinking, now they're talking about it.
And while people think about that, because you're all gonna start waking up. And as I do the memory thing for Jules, it's gonna involve all of you. But I'm gonna let, Isabelle's, you do a million things. Which, which of the part of the million things you do, would you like to, would you like to spotlight?
I have no idea. I am here both for Power Rangers Centurion and the podcast. In the podcast, I am the Red Ranger, Jane Russell. I am in Being Villainous as Beatrix Dupree. I started out as the assassin, although I've kind of like grown instead into the honeypot expert.
You've turned a corner apparently.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a shape changer and they just keep, I keep volunteering myself and get volunteered to honeypot people. That is, that is what I prefer.
And honeypot people, okay?
This is true. But yes, I am the shape changing assassin. This is, this is true. I am the shape changing assassin there. And as Grim said, we will be streaming Session Two. Not this week, but next week. Right, next week. Next Thursday, we're doing that every other, every other Thursday at Shadows of Nox. I am also in the Summer School Project that John is running, the Kids on Bikes game. Every Friday. I am, I am playing Roxy. I don't remember what last name I gave her, so right, we're just gonna call her Roxy. I have too many characters in my head. So far, she is mad at everyone else because they destroyed school, not just school property, but like scripts and stuff to make armor, which is just like, no. So yeah, so so far she hates everybody and she's probably gonna die first because she has no armor now. Except for like a weird mannequin, like arm or something. I don't know. What else am I doing? I am in Fallout. Gosh, Fallout with Grim, where I fight Quinn, the mercenary, over on Lucas G Variety. And then I run Call of Cthulhu. The Chapter One finale will be the 25th of August. It's super exciting. I can't wait. Everybody's gonna fucking hate me. It's gonna be wonderful.
Can't be any worse than getting toasted and then very naked.
I could turn into a leech guy again.
I think that's it. I have one thing that I did and I will be posting stuff as I get the stuff. So you'll just have to keep an eye on places for that. It makes me very uncomfortable to promote it right now. So I'm just gonna say I will be showing things as I get things in places. But yeah, that's me.
Okay, so here are a couple of things that Jules knows that Isabelle should know. One is that there is, that as you are kind of cruising the news this fine morning, assuming you were up before everyone else. You are producing the news on your computer. You actually get a link or something that you're, you were vaguely aware of, but like you had to think for a second. It's called RidgeTube, which is the localized version of like, it's like a YouTube ripoff that Centurion Ridge uses. It's the first part of it. Don't look at me like that, John Blair. It's a real thing that exists in this universe.
I just, I don't love the name RidgeTube. I feel like it might, I feel like it.
Sounds kind of suggestive.
There was a citywide vote and no one wanted to call it Centurion Tube. So it became RidgeTube and.
I really think that it's just a little bit better, just call it RimTube. Tiny bit better.
All right. So regardless of that, Isabelle, so you find out about that. There's like a special city council meeting coming up. And the only reason you kind of notice is that word Power Rangers is attached to it on the bottom. Apparently, city council meeting happening about you today. The other part of this is that everybody gets, everybody gets this text message as they're waking up from Ellie. And either you gave Ellie your phone number or she got it through Power Ranger magic. Ellie sends a message to all of you and, and says two things. One is, actually she says three. First message is, "Hi, this is Ellie," with a little smile on her face. A second message is, "Don't trust Jeff." A third message is, "Don't sign any contracts." And then Jules, you get a message shortly after that from Ellie. That's just for you. Did your dad ever go to Angel Grove? Question mark?
I mean, I don't understand how that's any of your business or how that has anything to do with anything. But I can ask. Look, she, don't get me wrong, like she took a computer and Jules is not happy with her.
I was trying to figure out you were being sodium starchy to our new Ranger. I had forgotten about the, the, the computer pilfering. Okay?
Jules does not forget about computer pilfering.
All of a sudden, Jules is anti-stealing? That's crazy.
I know.
Well, yeah, because the computer was mine. I'm finally taking stuff that belongs to other people, but you don't take computers from me. That's just rude.
You get it. There's like a, there's like a dot as she's typing and then Ellie's second message comes through and she goes, "If he was in Angel Grove, see if he was ever in the desert." And then there's a question mark next to that.
Why? Why are you, why, why, why? Is what I send.
She says, "Can't respond over unsecure communication line."
Okay, that's not suspicious at all. Fine. I guess I will call my dad and ask him if he was ever in Angel Grove or the desert area.
Yes. By the way, everyone else gets a text message about the contracts and the Jeff thing and all of a sudden I have Ellie's phone number. So Jules, your, your dad takes a few minutes to respond and you just hear like the, the word Thoreau, like your dad is grumbling the word Thoreau over the phone and then he goes, "Hi, hello, good morning, hello, who's this?" Hello?
Your, your daughter? Hi.
Oh, hi. Sorry, I've been up all night grading these Thoreau papers, so I'm a little, a little tired. People really don't understand Thoreau. I'm real sad about it. Hey, how are you doing? No, no run-ins with the Power Rangers, right? And, and he has like, it, it sounds like a little joke when he, when he says it.
No, no, of course not. Why would I have run in with the Power Rangers? That's crazy. I do have a question.
They're everywhere destroying buildings.
Yeah, but I mean, you know me and I'm just here studying and, and playing around on my computer. Wouldn't have anything to do with those dastardly Rangers. But hey, so I don't want to keep you, I know you're grading papers, but can I ask you a quick question? It's a little weird, it's a little random.
Yeah, always. The answer might be gummy bears. But, but yeah.
Um, yeah, maybe, maybe, hopefully not though. So hey, Tab, were you ever in, you know, the, like the, the desert-y area in Angel Grove? Were you, have you ever been there before?
There's a long silence. And then your phone shorts out.
Great. I guess I'm gonna go visit my dad in person.
Would you like to do that today or would you like to, to talk with the rest of the Rangers?
She just talked and fucking disappears.
Yeah, actually, yeah, I think she just like, she's just like done and she's like, all right, fine, I'm gonna go see my dad and she's just gonna, she's gonna head out and go to her dad's house.
Okay, we, we will, we will come to that. But for the rest of the Rangers, is there, so you are waking up, you have these weird text messages, you have a hello from Ellie and then something about contracts, something about Jeff. I will not make you roll for this. Jeff is the name of the dude that was very putty-like. That was the front desk associate at Goldar's laser tag arena. Just to jog everyone's memory. But apparently Ellie met him. So either that means Goldar's still in town or this is just a by the way. But everybody wakes up to those messages from the Silver Ranger.
Because I can't remember. Did Leah, does Leah know that Ellie stole a computer? I can't remember if I was, if that information is just something I've forgotten.
You, you were putting C4 on the building, so you were a little busy preparing to destroy the factory because of all the black evil goo that was inside of it. But, but it, it, it was a, it was a, it was like a CPU desktop, old school, Windows 97 thing. So it's not like you, you'd miss it. It wasn't, it was, it was only portable by virtue of like a person carrying it out of the building.
I was wondering if I knew like that, that Jules had an issue with Ellie. I just can't remember if Leah knew.
I, no, I, I think that's a private war that only Jules was fighting.
Fair enough. Okay. Fair enough, okay.
Uh, I just forgot who Jeff is, so I was about to be like, who's Jeff?
Same.
Thank you for the reminder.
Jeff, yeah. This origin story I can't actually explain cuz that episode is not in the podcast yet. Um, but but yeah, so that sort of jogs the memory a little bit of apparently Ellie went to the laser tag arena either before or after you and is just now mentioning it for one. Uh, but for two, apparently you had a run-in with Jeff, so there you go. Does anyone have any questions or anything they would like to look up? Anyone curious about anything?
I'm curious about going to this, um, this city council meeting about the Power Rangers. They don't, they don't know who we are though, right? They, like, they they haven't seen our faces. They just know, they just know us as the Power Rangers.
Yes, uh, they uh, they have the doctor footage that the news anchor showed, essentially. Uh, essentially, as he come downstairs, Ernie actually has the TV up on the counter and he's actually like tuned in to like Ridge Tube. It it's weird, he has like little buddy-erant antennas on it, but also his laptop is plugged in. So it's like unnecessarily retro.
So he's using an old CRT?
Essentially.
Not even a flat screen?
Not even a flat screen, it's an old CRT. It's, it's very, like, like the counter has to be so wide and so deep to be able to fit it. It's real neat. Uh, but he's actually got the, the Ridge Tube link on to like the blank city council room meeting. Um, and it's got the little countdown timer on. And I guess because you were the one to mention it, Felix, when you come down to kind of turning and goes, uh, so I, I don't know if this is good or bad, but they're gonna talk about you guys at the council meeting today. Uh, probably gonna be well attended, most likely.
Probably gonna be bad. I mean, with that news footage going around, it's not like anyone really likes us right now, so. To be good. I feel like they're probably gonna try and um, I don't know.
If it helps any, the cult is still on your side. I don't know if that helps any or or not. But they don't really get news footage, so, you know. He, he's trying real hard to be, to be helpful, uh, but he is, um, he's not quite been the same. His verb is not quite where it used to be, for obvious reasons.
Yes, definitely understandable.
Doctor footage is one of those things that uh bad guys use to make the good guys look bad in movies all the time. We just need to make sure we stand our ground, keep doing the right thing and we'll be fine eventually.
I, I did put the poster of Running Man out in in the window, but I don't think anybody's got got, got that message yet. No, but um, got new donuts, bought donuts.
Donuts.
Yeah, I, but it's uh, people, uh, people are talking around town. Uh, the uh propaganda's been pretty is successful sadly. Probably about as bad as propaganda after the firehouse or after the movie house burned down, we got one.
Leah's just gonna get coffee. Uh, she's, she's at her own place, I guess, so she's gonna eat coffee.
You are, you are at your own place. Uh, Evelyn does have, um, Evelyn gets Ridge Tube on her Roku. And so she's actually tuning in, but she tunes in for the city council meetings about as much as she tunes in for like the Price is Right. But it catches your attention that the word Power Rangers are a featured item on, on this particular broadcast.
I didn't mean to switch the scene to myself. I legitimately forgot that I wouldn't be with them.
You can move in at any time. There is a room for you available at the pawn shop. You can move in anytime you wish.
Yes, but then people, people break into my house and freeze my roommate. It's just not good.
Yes, that was the one time. That was the one time, okay.
Time and you were living there, so, you know, I wasn't and it still happened to one of my family members. You being there doesn't necessarily change the fact that she's still potentially a target.
Coffee.
Link has already eaten two donuts and has, and is double fisting two more donuts.
Fabulous. Uh, the sugar rush is a wheel, uh, is a real thing, so that's just something, something you will eventually have to grab, but not now because you are, uh, uh, because you are, you are young enough to be able to eat four donuts and bounce back. Uh, Ernie, by the way, Alex, as you come down, Ernie's gonna look at you and go, uh, are you, are you writing a, you're writing a song appearing like guitar?
Just have this little riff stuck in my head, just can't quite get it right.
Uh, it's, uh, it sounds okay. Yeah, that's okay. Um, I guess just keep, just keep practicing.
Yeah, it's just one of those things where it's not what I hear in my head when I think about it, so.
Uh, well, we, we have some guitar strings here. Let me know if uh that's of any use uh to you.
Could be.
While we wait for the countdown uh for the city council meeting, uh, we are actually gonna go, we're gonna do the, we're gonna do a Jules scene. Uh, and then we'll, we'll come, we'll come back. Uh, Jules, i- is your dad what you would consider a, is he kind of a clean guy? Would you say, like, when he grades papers, is it like a tornado went off? Or is it like inbox-outbox sort of thing?
Yeah, I'd say he's more OCD than anything, so everything has its place, everything is nice and neat. Um, he has a stack of, of ungraded papers on a very specific spot of his desk. When he grades them, they go into another pile that's in another specific spot on his desk. And God help you if you slightly even move them a little bit, he gets very upset with you. Um, his pens are like nicely like lined up. He's, he's very, very particular when he's grading papers.
Cool. So, uh, two things. Uh, one, what is your mom's name? Cuz you told me and I forgot, or I didn't write it down, which is a bad gem.
One.
Look at her face as I forgot.
One second.
If you give me a good name, I'll give a name for like Udora or something. I'm gonna go full on Sondheim.
I usually, um, I usually have, um, I have a Google Drive with all my characters and backstories and names and stuff, so I think I have it, but I need to make sure. I may not have it.
Like seven gigs at this point?
Oh, I don't have one for Jules. Okay, okay. Um, Jules' mom is named, um, Filomena.
Filomena.
Filomena. What is, what is, I don't, I don't know anything right now. I'm so sorry. Um, Filomena Burn.
Right, so we're gonna go with that. So, two things, uh, you would expect everything to be neat and orderly and just have a whole bunch of stacks of papers. That is not the case. You know that meme from It's Always Sunny in Philadelphia where Charlie has like the giant wall about the, about the mailroom? The red string. Your dad is standing on a, he's like taking all the magnets off of the fridge and he's like this wall of like the last page of the row essays and he's like drawing things on it, beautiful mind style. And as you kind of come in, he, his head whips over and he goes, close the door, Filomena, close the door.
I'll go in and close the door and dad, it's, it's me, it's not mom. Are you okay?
Oh, you haven't called me dad in a while. That's, that's hot, but uh, another time, another time, dear. Okay, I think I've, I, I think I've almost got this figured out, the pattern, okay? It, no, no, you, you don't, don't look at me. I, I think I've almost gotten the pattern. So they, they lost five in Angel Grove and I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure the five of them were linked. No, cuz that, that was when we were there, you know, so he's, he's starting to go off about something and he thinks you're, you're mom for some reason.
Trying to not be horrified about what he just said to me. Just gonna, just gonna, just, just soldier on past that. Okay, um, pattern, a pattern for what exactly? What, what are you mapping out?
You look at it, it's the circles from your dream.
Okay.
Uh, if, do you mean to jog your, your player memory?
A little, yeah, I vaguely remember, but I, I'm not sure if I'm confusing it with something else.
Yeah, so it's the dream you have where you're in the desert leading up to the command center that you don't know what's called that. Because you're playing Jules Hachane. Um, and your dad walks by these kind of weird crop circles that have, it's like body parts sticking out of them and he's walking toward the command center. Your dad is basically recreating the crop circles, but not the body parts. Like you can actually, um, it, it's like the old drawings of Star Wars where it's like from far away. Like your, your dad is recreating this path that you walked with him.
Have you been here before? I mean, I've been there before.
You talking about, we were just there last week for that, I, we were there for the conference and we stayed for the music festival and those poor kids died and I just, I couldn't let it go and then you were like, I wanna go home, but I was like, I'm not going home yet. And you were like, but I'm like, oh. So, uh, your dad just kind of goes off in this imaginary conversation between you and between him and your mom about something that happened in Angel Grove when he was younger. Uh, you do know your dad did do some teaching at the university there cuz it's super vague and they needed him in the department, but it was like, uh, non-tenured extraneous stuff. And he was young, so he didn't make much money. Um, but he doesn't really ever talk about Angel Grove. Like, it's just not something that has come up.
So I should have asked this before I left, but my phone, is it still working at least? Like, would I be able to use the camera?
Uh, it's turned off. You haven't tried to turn it on yet.
Okay, um, while I'm listening to him kind of rant, I'm gonna try turning my phone back on.
Uh, you, your phone turns back on. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna collapse all of your, of your, uh, I, I'm not gonna do that to you every game. That'd be super mean.
I appreciate that. Um, I'm gonna take pictures of all of the, the stuff that my dad has kind of put together.
Uh, your dad also starts talking about, um, uh, news stories, um, and I'm just gonna give you the year cuz I don't know how else to do this. Um, he's talking about news stories from nineteen sixty-four, by the way. Like, he's talking like it's nineteen sixty-four.
Okay, um.
Question. Are we in modern day in game?
You're in modern day in game, yeah.
So it's twenty twenty-four. He's talking about an event from sixty years ago? How old is her dad?
He was pretty young in sixty-four.
Right, but if he was pretty young in sixty-four, um, still means he's like.
He's at least.
Like, he's about seventy, maybe older.
That is very surprising to learn, isn't it?
Okay.
They had me later in life.
Your dad is always looks very youthful. Like, you don't tell people his real age cuz it, like, they're like, what? There's no way.
Fair enough.
Now that you're thinking about, now, now that you're thinking about it, dad has always kind of looked younger than he should.
It's cuz he's Gen X. Oh, isn't it?
No, he's not Gen X.
Boomer.
I mean.
But he's one of the good ones.
My, my, both my parents turned seventy this year, so.
My parents are in their fifties.
Oh, is that possible? Doesn't matter, outside stuff.
Actually, no, are they turning sixty? I think my dad's turning sixty next, next year.
That seems a little more feasible than, than, anyway.
Is he still focusing? Is my mom home?
Not that you can tell.
Okay. I'm gonna I'm gonna leave there and I'm gonna call my mom.
Uh, your mom answered that, uh, day, uh, good, good morning. Um, I am swinging by the French Boulanger place. It's the Maple of Clares. Do you want me to drop you off somewhere while you're studying, sweetie?
I'm, I'm actually at the house, mom. Um, is dad okay?
I'm sorry. Uh, well, I, I mean, he, no one's understanding thorough as far as I can tell, but uh, other than that, everything, he did stay up all night. Grading. I was very concerned about that, actually.
I, I, he's, uh, I don't know, I, something's not right. Um, he thought I was you and he was talking about something that happened when you guys were in Angel Grove years ago. Um, he's just kind of ranting and it, he just, I don't know, he just seems really out of sorts and not really like himself.
Oh, I, I mean, God, I can't remember the last time I was at Angel Grove. Even before the weird stuff started happening there, just it's, it's pretty out of the way, like, I can't remember being, when's the last time I was there?
Um, he said something about a conference and a music festival and there was a bunch of kids that died. And he was like really, really focused and stuck on it and you wanted to go home, um. And then he just pauses.
Then your phone dies.
There's just, no, there's a long pause and she goes, uh, I don't think that's right. Cuz I, I can't remember ever going to a music festival in Angel Grove.
I don't know, mom. Like I said, he thought I was you. Um, I tried telling him that I was not you and he uh, well, we're not gonna, uh, anyway, um. But yeah, no, he's just, I don't know, he has like, like a conspiracy board almost up and he's like, I don't know, I, I think maybe you need to come home.
Yeah, I, I will do that. I, um, I, I will handle it. Your mom starts talking really quickly in a way that concerns, that will start to concern you. Um, your mom starts talking very quickly. The gist of it is, sweetie, you should, you should get out of the house. I will handle it. Don't, don't worry about it. Um, I, I will take care of it. Just, just go, just go, go back to studying. Everything's gonna be fine. Your mom adopts that like weird, false, fearful thing that people do when they're trying to make you feel better and it makes you feel about ten times worse and more panicked. Uh, but your mom is essentially trying to get you out of the house.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, sure, mom, whatever you say, uh, keep me updated and then I'm gonna hang up and I'm gonna go to the kitchen and make a pot of coffee. And I'm gonna not leave. I'm gonna stay there. Actually, I'm gonna take, once the coffee's done brewing, I'm gonna take a cup to my dad and I'm gonna sit in the office with him. Um, and I am not leaving him alone.
Probably the most concerning thing about this is that at the end of the sand, and we're gonna transition back to the city council after this, at the edge of the sand is a tiny familiar building. And that's the last thing he draws before we're gonna move back. To the pawn shop. But it's that same building, um, even though your dad's drawing skills aren't great, even in small scale, you can tell that that's the same building from your dream.
Um, I am gonna text everybody and let them know that I, um, that, um, I'm having issues, there's something wrong with my dad and I need to be home. But I'm available if somebody needs me, so like by text or or phone call.
Uh, Leah's immediately gonna send back, hey, do you need, do you need anything from us? Do you need help there?
Uh, I, I think I'm good for right now, um, but I'll, I'll definitely keep you updated because something, something weird's going on. Um, I just, I don't wanna leave my dad alone right now and I think my mom's being weird too, um, but I'll keep you updated.
Okay.
Um, alright, so for the people watching the Centurion Ridge uh city council. Um, alright, so for the people watching the Centurion Ridge, uh, city council broadcast. Uh, it starts. And twenty minutes go by and they're still doing their thing. Thirty minutes go by, it just seems like a regular city council meeting. And then. Coach Gristle gets up to the podium. And for those who do not recall, Coach Gristle was the guy at the Opera House who turned into the werewolf. Um, and is, I don't know if he is not pro ranger necessarily, but definitely him speaking is. Just anticipating what he's going to say, um. He starts talking about you as though you're in the room. He uses the word vile, deranged. Dangerous, all, all the good propaganda words for people you wanna make fear. Uh, there are some gasps from the, um. Older, uh, older audience that's there, um. And I actually have this written down. So he starts, uh, slinging your name. He mentions the, uh. He mentions especially the, the docu, uh, that the footage of the radio station specifically. Like it's not just that you blew up, you know, the bread factory, which is bad enough, but you focused on telecommunications. He specifically references the Yellow Ranger. Um, specifically, like he targets you because they have the footage of you blowing stuff up. Um, and it's this weird, uh, mix of like jingoism. It's this kind of ten-minute diatribe and at the end of it, he goes. And that's why I'm calling for an immediate election. To create a sergeant-at-arms against the Power Rangers. Of which I am going to be at the head. Centurion Ridge, you need real heroes that will do things to keep you safe. You know my record, folks, and if you think I can only win on the field, well, then you don't know the real me. Vote Coach, I have his full name here. Vote Coach McKinley Gristle. I'll keep it real and I'll keep you safe from the scourge that has the Power Rangers. And then the, uh, the city council meeting. Devolves a little bit after that, but there is like a little PAC ID that flashes on the screen. Um, for, for Ridge Tube, like you can donate here. So this is obviously a planned thing. Um, and not impromptu, but knowing what you know about the good coach, that could be a problem. Um, but a PAC number, ID number, uh, Link especially, you know this. Means that he has to have an office in town somewhere. So there is also a physical location that you know he's going to be at.
Go blow it up.
Cause now we have.
No.
I mean, you can, I've opted to stop you from doing that. That wasn't what I had planned tonight, but I'm not gonna stop you from doing whatever you wanna do.
Um, there will be innocent people inside that office, most likely. No.
Uh, not around midnight. Everyone will be gone, sleeping.
Yes, you're just gonna perpetuate that they blow things up they don't like.
I don't know who you're talking about. I, it was not me. It was a, a, a small, small. Animal with pyrotechnics on its back and it ran away by the time before it blew up.
You've been hanging out with Abernath too much. By the way, uh, Leia, are you like saying this into your phone? Like have you called the other ranger?
Oh, I feel like I would, just be like, hey, guys, I think we should blow up the dude's. Uh, headquarters, but like make sure it looks like, uh, we didn't do it.
They'll blame it on us if it gets blown up because they're already using the footage. Uh, in negative ways. They'll just make it worse. No. Come on, back me up here.
Yeah, we shouldn't blow anything else up. Um, sounds like a bad idea. However, my idea.
I love the delays, by the way, please, please take a story point for the delay while you were thinking about whether or not you should blow up the. The office of the coach ready for.
Listen, I, I mind kind of two sides of the fence here. One. We could, um, just embrace the fact that they think we're evil and maybe use that to our advantage somehow. And just kind of like, I don't know. Make it, I think that'll make us, make it easier for us to maybe find out what Ivan's up to, or here's my other plan. We do have somebody, uh, that we know has run for an election before. Perhaps we could, we could have a little plant. We could have them campaign as this person and if they get elected, they can help. We can do things that can help, uh, clear our name and, um. Honestly, Ernie has a great story. He has this, um, he has this pawn shop. He was taking care of this. Lovely child that the Power Rangers helped lead to corruption and anger. And is now an evil goo man running around the streets. Um, so honestly, like, that's a pretty captivating story that I feel like people could vote for, just saying.
Uh, Felix, in the back of your head, you hear a small voice.
No.
Very familiar and the voice says, oh, that's good. I should choose you. Interesting. I better keep an eye on you, Pink. It's not I, it's not Ivan voice, it's the voice of.
I know, I didn't want, I didn't want the ghost, I didn't want the ghost, um. The ghost voice in my head. Everyone else was hearing voices and I wanted to call them all crazy.
Look, the ghost really liked it. He liked the, they liked the plan, uh, cause he didn't know the gender yet, uh.
Counterpoint, we blow up the thing and Jules manipulates the video, so it looks like the coach blew it, blew it up. To, to frame us. I think that's an excellent plan. Make sure I'm on, make sure I'm on camera and then she gets the footage and manipulates it and then releases it to the media the next day. That's, that's like a good plan to me.
One hundred percent down.
Love it.
The only thing, the only problem that I have with that is then it becomes like armed against theirs and it's already out first, so there was.
Well, they don't know it's us, right? So we're just citizens to them.
The, the problem is, they already blame us. Even if we put a video out. They're gonna be like, that's, that's doctored footage. And yes, they'll be, they'd be right because you doctored the footage. And it's not gonna help us to blow up another building.
It'd be fun.
It would be fun. I hear, I hear that, that, I hear that as a vote.
Alright, I, I, I will have, if you're gonna blow up a building, I will have no part in it.
I mean, I didn't have anything to do with the first building, so.
I only had something to do with half of the buildings in question. So.
It, yeah, I, I don't, I'm gonna have no part in you blowing up a building.
That's fine.
If you go blow it up, I'm, I'm not participating. I'm not helping you. I'm not. And you'll, honestly, I will have lost all respect for you if you decide to blow up that building.
Oh.
Oh, he left.
What the hell is going on?
I think that might have just been like a, um.
Was that just a really weird time?
I think it was just really bad timing.
Yeah, that was just really, really bad timing.
I don't know, and then he says, mic drop. Uh, sorry about that. I have no idea why I just decided to. That was great. It's just like, I had no respect for you and you walked out. Whoops.
That was quite dramatic.
That was starting to feel very like real life personal and then like you were gone and I was, I was concerned.
I was, I accidentally, uh, I was, I got a message from somebody.
I can't hear you, Grim, if they are speaking in return.
But I think it might be a you thing, cause I can hear, I'm just fine.
Yeah, they, we can hear them and I can see them and hear them just.
Yeah, no, I, I was, I was looking at a message somebody sent me and I accidentally.
You should hear the horrible things he's saying about you.
You know, it wouldn't be the first time. Uh, I, 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 I will say. Uh, there are costs to actively blowing up a building as a Power Ranger that should probably be considered. Uh, but I will also not, I, I will say, there are other things that are going to happen this episode, so you can. But there is a good chance that you will not get a chance to fulfill your, your dream of making his keep Centurion Ridge safe, PAC. Uh, make Centurion Ridge Centurion again, um. It, it, they, a thing will, a thing will occur, so there's that.
Fine, I won't blow up a building.
I, listen, I was all about blowing up the bread factory because. It was going to contaminate people and it was a threat to human safety. This just kind of feels like we're mad at the guy, so we wanna blow his place up. For being mean to us and I think that's maybe just. Um, maybe we shouldn't go down that route. I don't know. I'm new to this whole ranger thing too, but blowing things up for no reason kind of seems like. Or at least blowing things up for a reason other than to help people seems kind of anti. What we are supposed to be doing here, I guess, but, um.
I mean, we're supposed to be the good guys. Blowing stuff up is, blowing stuff up just to blow stuff up is a bad guy thing.
Okay, 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 okay. Next, next up then, if that's not happening, then what else can we do?
We need to figure out.
Outed as a werewolf.
I mean, that's possibly doable, but they'll probably blame us for that too, but outing him as a werewolf means we could remove him as a problem.
That is true. Also, we fought him before, right? So.
Hmm.
Do you think he's probably still under Ivan's control?
Probably.
I mean, I wouldn't put it past this being an, uh, either the ooze pulling some tricks since it's apparently intelligent. Or, uh, Ivan doing a thing. So it's either, it's either purple snot or black snot who working against us.
Oh, right. Um, out of character, was it, was it, um, Ivan who, oh, it was, cause he like, there was lightning and he transformed into the thing, right? Or?
Uh, yes, also, uh, I would like to pause for just a moment and exit and then come back so that I can actually hear the things that Grim is saying. Cause it's making it very difficult for me.
Do you wanna just go to commercial right now? Or do you want me to put the, be right back screen up for a few minutes?
This is a needed basis and you don't need to know.
Yeah, it'll, it'll just take me a second. So it's up to you, it's, what do you wanna do? Do we, do we wanna do a break? How are people?
I wouldn't mind a break.
Uh, well, I'll just put the be right back screen up and we'll be back in about maybe five, ten minutes. How's that?
Well, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I did, I do wanna hear the things that Grim is saying, otherwise, so. Welcome back. The question before, uh, the voice in the sky, Alani. Is, uh, was Coach, uh, I have his name down, was Coach Gristle, um. Working with Ivan? And the answer is yes. Uh, Coach Gristle transformed into a werewolf. After being hit with lightning in, in the, uh, in the first floor of the Opera House. He was aware of the trap that was set. It was quite obvious that he was aware of the trap. Um, and so the, the, there's a ninety-eight percent likelihood that he at least is aware of Ivan and has talked to him. If not, is that right, working for Ivan? Uh, for, for people that were, it's a ninety-eight percent chance.
That's what I thought. I, I just wanted to confirm that he was an Ivan monster, a black goo monster.
Uh, yes, no, no black goo that you, that you know of.
Well, I think we should pay this werewolf a visit.
Yeah.
Or at least spy on him a little bit, see what his plans are to ruin our good name.
I think that's a good plan.
The question is, where would you like to go to spy on the coach?
I mean. He's got an office, right?
He does have a PAC office, yes. There's a PAC ID number and everything. You can easily find the location address of the office.
Sounds like a, sounds like a lead.
We can always, they, they don't know we're the Power Rangers. We could always, um, pretend to be volunteers.
Mm-hmm.
You could.
Great idea. We wanna bring the power.
Take Centurion great again. No, too soon, too real. Nevermind.
Too soon.
We can get some drones and spy on them.
Uh, Ernie, kind of, Ernie, uh, so Ernie, are, uh, do you all go to a separate room or is Ernie like in the room if you're having this open discussion? But if you're.
I don't see any reason why we would be hiding it from Ernie at this point unless anybody else feels we should be.
No, I, I agree.
Uh, Ernie kind of pipes up and goes, uh, we don't have any drones for you to drone with? Uh, also, there's an FAA regulation, so your drones will probably get. Either controlled by Ivan or shot down potentially, so. Unless you really have like two hundred bucks to spend for a good drone, drones are probably not gonna happen. I guess they could happen. I don't know, unless someone, one of you has like drone capability as a ranger.
I don't think so.
Pretty neat though.
Is that a, is that a grid power?
Uh, we can always talk about making it a grid power if you want to have a drone. I can always whip something up in the game. We'll figure it out. Uh, but, uh, but suffice it to say, Ernie does not seem enthused about the drone idea. Um. He says, well, I, I, I guess. For me, running for a city council, it's a special council position. I, I guess I. I could, but I'm hoping that I don't have to and your good names will be cleared before. Any of this nonsense happens, like it's, it's very, uh, I don't like people doing manipulated footage. It's not cool.
I mean, I wouldn't wanna involve you anymore than we need to. Um, you're already helping us out enough. So can we treat that as the backup plan of the backup plan?
Yeah, I, I, I'm happy, I'm happy to help as much as I can. Um, well, in fact, huh, my. My cousin doesn't have any idea who the Power Rangers are. He just knows they exist in Angel Grove, so it's weird that he hasn't looked into that. Cause it feels like it's something he should know. Uh, but, yeah, um.
Yeah, I think you have a more direct connection to us though, thanks to the cult and the fact that there's been some stuff with Ivan going on for years and. Aren't they like, a relatively new generation? In, uh.
I'm way about the same age. He did tell me something about getting frozen. And I wasn't really following along, something about. He may have been eaten by a snowman, but I did not inquire, cause even I have like a weirdness cutoff level. And I feel like getting eaten by a snowman is my weirdness cutoff level. Uh, but I will, I will check in with my cousin in Angel Grove at some point. If there's anything anybody wants me to ask him. Um, I can always pass along messages, I guess.
Um. Link is gonna like look at the phone that they've been talking to Leia on and like, should we tell him about the thing that we discovered? Cause we might be able to find out some stuff from Angel Grove about that thing you have.
Are you talking about the coin?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, like Link is alluding to the coin, uh.
Uh, this is a more Katie, Katie thing, like just so you and I are on the same page as to what we're talking about, but yeah. Uh, sure, why not? I don't see why. I, I really don't think there's much we need to like hide from him.
Okay. So, we had a bad guy.
By the way, Link, were you like inching into the phone like Leia's there as you were saying the thing? The thing hinted, we like inching toward the phone.
So, this guy's like, blah.
He was, he was doing like, like he had to resist doing the, when he said thing, doing like air quotes. Um. Yeah, so he's like, he's like, okay, so, um, we ran into a bad guy that, um, wasn't. A part of Ivan's army, but was still sort of, sort of affiliated with him, I assume, in some way. Then he brought us a, a coin that had, um, a cat on it that was black around the edges. Um, and, uh.
Okay, I. Yeah.
Uh, I was hoping if you're gonna talk to your cousin, you might be able to ask him if something. Has changed with the Power Rangers over in Angel Grove.
Uh, sure, yeah, I, I. I, I will, I had, I was having some trouble at the end of the conversation getting through. There was like static that was building up on the phone. Um, it got hard to hear him, but yeah, next time I talk to him, I'll, I'll, I'll do that definitely for sure. He started coughing too, which was a little weird.
That is weird. Um, but hold on. There's Power Rangers in Angel Grove. You two, you two, he's going to point at Alex and then he's going to point at the phone as if he was pointing at Leo. Were Power Rangers somewhere else?
Are you trying to meet?
Yes, you and Alex.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. That's the thing we did. Stone Canyon.
Yeah, we didn't blow up buildings there either.
No, we tried to keep, uh, we 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 saved Santa. We saved Santa.
We did save Santa.
I wonder where else in the world there are Power Rangers? Because if there's three places, there may be a fourth.
There may be more than four.
Maybe somewhere in the future.
I see. So I'm gonna move now while you're all kind of deciding we're we're gonna, I don't want to cut the scene short. Don't make sure we get to the big thing. They've decided you're gonna go to the to the pack office. Yeah?
Yep, we're gonna pretend to be volunteers.
I do. Uh, so uh, you're gonna go ahead and grab the van and go do that. While you're doing that. Jules. Um. That's home. And. Looks at you goes, oh, hello, dear. You're still, you're still here.
Yep.
I I I told you that you could uh. But you didn't need to be here. Uh. So nice that you care about your father so much.
You say that like it's surprising.
I, not not surprising. It's just, you know, sometimes when he has his his episodes, you know, it's it's something that he kind of likes to keep to himself. So. If you, I'm I'm home now. I'll take care of him. You should, you should go. Do whatever you do. Go uh, go do uh, roller derby. You're you're into roller derby, right? Just, just go, go do that. Just anywhere else.
No, I'm good here, actually. Um.
No, no, you should go.
Mom?
Like you can solo roller derby.
Right? Mom? I'm not leaving. What's going on?
Really? Yeah, I think you should go. I I think.
I think I'm staying right here and I think that you need to tell me what's going on right now.
Okay, um. So I'm the parent and. No, that's not going to work because he's going to wake up and read. Look, look, it's nothing. It's not a big deal. I have him on some medication for this. It's not a big deal. It's fine. I'm handling it. It's all handled. He just came at a bad time. It'll be fine. He'll be fine after I give him his medication.
Mother?
It'll be fine. Older.
What?
I can be sassy too. Ooh, look at this.
What is going on? What is wrong with dad? Why is he talking about something that happened in the sixties? Like he was there? Like you were there? Okay.
He really seems to think I was, but I wasn't. Um, I I don't think I've ever actually been to Angel Grove. I had to think about it for a moment. Uh, but he's very convinced that we were both there at the same time and we definitely weren't. So then end of story. He's, I'm gonna give him the medication. He'll be fine tomorrow. He won't remember any of this. He never does. So you should. Just go.
I'm not leaving. What medication is he on? What is the medication exactly for?
It's just when he has an episode, I give him the medication. He goes to sleep. Sometimes things explode, but he goes to sleep and then he wakes up and he doesn't remember any of it and I get rid of the drawings. And and it's fine.
Okay.
Always fine.
Well, here's what's gonna happen now. Um. I'm gonna go with you to give him his medication because I want to see what you're giving him and I want to see who the doctor is. Um, and then I will get rid of his drawings for you.
Great. Um, I need to, I need you to give me a mic roll.
Okay. Oh, are you sure? Could it be like a science roll or a finesse?
No, it needs to be a mic roll.
Okay.
You aren't Blue Ranger, so you do if he, I I think you actually have something where if you roll a one or two on something you're not skilled in. Uh, you can you can roll again or something like that as a Blue Ranger because I gave you all straight, straight powers from the book. Anywho, please give me a mic roll.
Okay, I don't have that one. I don't have that. I have something that that helps me out with like smarts rolls, but I don't have anything.
Okay. Oh, yeah, because it's smart, it's not. Okay. But anyways, you need a mic roll.
I got a one on the skill. Can I reroll that?
You can.
Okay. Nineteen.
Nineteen. Great. So your mom goes to basically grapple you and manhandle you out of the house. Like she's trying to like pick you up. Like. Like she's trying to literally like see that you out of your own house. Um, but as she does this. Blue lightning explodes from you. Like, and she like. Doesn't drop you because she doesn't have a great grip, but she just kind of backs away and goes, oh, I'm not doing this again. You gotta go, sweetie. You gotta go. Or no, I'm not doing this a second time.
Not doing what a second time?
I'm not dealing with the weirdness the second time. The last time he came back from Angel Grove talking gibberish and this happening, I'm not having it happen with you. Whatever it is, stop it. But right now, I'm your mother and I'm gonna tell you what to do. Stop it.
I'll stop it when you're straight with me and you tell me what medication he was on, who gave it to him, and you give me those drawings.
Just a sleeping medication. It's not that big a deal. His doctor gives it to him to make sure he sleeps.
Well, then you won't have any problem showing me the, then you won't have any problem showing me the bottle.
You're acting very uppity messy.
Well, you're acting really strange too.
Well, it's, it's weird. It's been weird since he came back from Angel Grove. He hasn't aged in like twenty years. So excuse me for trying to live my life and protect my husband the best way I know how. He doesn't remember when any of this happens and I have to deal with it. And you know what? Now you've got like blue lightning and a blue aura and I don't want to know. You know what? If you're on drugs, I don't want to know. Okay?
I'm not, I'm not.
Don't do them here.
I'm not on drugs. I'm not on drugs. And believe it or not, I want to help dad too. And you keeping things like this for me isn't helping.
Well, it wasn't important. I was.
It is now. It is now. I'm telling you, it is, it is important now and I might be in a position where I can help him. I need you to just trust me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, like uh, like the, like the. Oh, you're not, you're not, you're not shooting purple, so I guess you're not like the Ivan, the Ivan guy.
No, I'm not.
She goes to the, she goes to side room to get to get the bottle. It's a bottle from your family doctor. And it's it's literally just like a high level sleeping. Pain potion. Uh, your dad is currently as he is continually discribable. Now there are body parts in the crop circles like from your dream. But the, but the command center is still far away and he's like having a conversation with a guy called Andre. And they're talking about music at this point. Like, it's like he's at the music festival and your mom says, can I, oh, can I give him his medication, Miss Policewoman? And we can get on with our lives? Oh, strong again. Perfect. See, this is, you could have just said, dad's doing something weird, you know? I drove eighty miles an hour to get home and now we have to deal with all this. Where it'd be easier if you were just on drugs. Please don't do drugs. Drugs are bad.
I'm not gonna do drugs, mom. And you know, maybe if you had told me what was going on from the start, I wouldn't have scared you and I would have known what to do to happen.
What was I gonna tell you? Oh, your dad has an episode where he does weird, weird cryptic drawings of body parts. Look, there's like a hand sticking up out of, out of the, out of the. Out of the.
Yeah, no, that would have been great, actually. Um, no, we're gonna wait. I want to see what else he's gonna draw. It could be important.
Well, I am not waiting because this is my husband. And frankly, it's very disrespectful for you to want to go through an episode like this just to get information. You're so much like him. And she says that's an invective that is like, he says it with the invective of you're your father and it's not in the positive way.
Right, um. You know. What if knowing what, what if this could help him in the end? What? What if you putting him to sleep every time this happens is hurting him more than it's helping him? Maybe that's why he keeps doing this.
I just want him to get rest. That's all I, I want good things for my husband.
I know, mom.
I mean, I I I get that it's important for you to have mystery and things to solve and science and yay, but like.
That's not what that, that's not what this is about, mom, at all.
He's gonna talk to this Andre person about a stupid music festival and then he's gonna like fall down and bump his head again. And I don't want to have to do with that. So before he falls over, can I give him his medication, please?
Fine. What else does he draw?
I don't know. It's more of these stupid circle things. It's just more detailed drawings of the circles. I I don't know. They look like graves and I hate it. I always kind of, I stop when he does, when he does the graves. I hate those.
Do you have, did you keep any of the old pictures anywhere? Can?
No, no, I I I always burn them. It's better for him not to remember. Because he doesn't remember any of it. He won't remember this tomorrow.
I need these, though. I can't let you burn these. I need them.
Fine, as long as you don't ever bring them back to this house, as long as you take them away and we never talk about this again. I don't like this. I don't like this you you're becoming. I feel like you're going through teenagerdom and I don't like it. But if if you take the drawings and you come back a more respectful daughter, that will. That will be better. Uh, by the way, sorry, trigger for anyone that is like. Family fighting thing is a trigger. I didn't realize it's gonna go this deep.
You know what? Fine. Keep your head in the sand. I'm gonna take the drawings and I will figure this out and I will help dad. You put him to sleep and I'm gonna grab all of the drawings and I'm just gonna leave.
Before you leave.
Mm hmm.
Culture roll.
Okay.
Actually. I'm gonna have you do two culture rolls. Uh, just give me them in a row.
Okay.
We're gonna see how you do.
Twenty-one for the first one? And nineteen for the second.
So. As you get close to your mom, because she's kind of between your dad and the pictures. Her eyes have kind of gone dark, not like dark Willow dark, more like she's kind of literally dulling herself. Like, like she's gone into this weird kind of masked work headspace. Um, and you kind of don't recognize your mom in in this moment.
There's no emotion there.
Yeah, there's, there's just, it's it's like a, it's like a shell of a person. Uh. And it's just, this is, this is a level maybe you have never experienced with your mom, any way, shape or form. Uh, with the emptiness. Emptiness is worrying. That's also just not something your mom is. The other thing. Is as you're pulling down. Pictures. A golden page falls out from behind one of them. And you only see it for a second before it disappears on the ground.
Can I make out anything on the page before it disappears?
Uh, no, it's just blank.
It's just a blank page. Okay. As I'm. Taking down the pictures and and kind of. Putting them in my bag. Um, looking around, is there, do I notice anything else in my dad's office that could help me at all? Um. Maybe like a ledger or a journal or anything like that that my dad would have been writing in that I could take with me that might help me?
You don't need it.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Um. I won't explain why now, but it will become apparent why later. Uh, but yeah, you you don't see that. Um, but you are able, I'm gonna give you this because I put you, I put you through heck. Whether or not you like your, like family or life or not, um, you're able to scoop up the the picture before it disappears from the floor, so you don't have to go scrambling around. Um, you do hear your dad utter the word sword on. Very quickly before he passes out.
Okay.
And that's the last thing you hear before you leave. Um, is someone going to call Jules or has texted Jules so they know they're to to meet you at either the pack office or to come back to Ernie's?
Uh, Link would have sent Jules a text with their plans. Um, and then depending on when Jules gets done, Link would have been like, we're leaving, going to the pack office or, you know, we're still at Ernie's. Uh, you know, essentially he'd notify her when they were leaving. So, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, now that I've given, uh, by the way, Jules, is there anything that you're thinking or want to do before you join up with the rest of the group?
Um. I think the last thing that she does before she leaves is, um, she looks back at her mom and and says, I don't know. I obviously don't know what you've been going through with all of this. Um. But you don't know anything about what I've been going through either. And I really am just trying to help dad. So. You can be mad at me. You can be disappointed in me. I don't really care. Um, if something like this happens again, I need the pictures. Don't burn them. And then she's gonna walk out.
Sassy. Um, okay, so now that I've given Jules emotional damage, how would the rest of you like some emotional damage?
Sure, why not? I'm used to it.
Right. So would anyone like to guess where the, where the pack office is close to?
Is it the radio station?
No, I bet it's not the uh. I bet it's near the um, the historical society.
Nope.
The bowling alley.
Opera House?
No, it's near.
The beach.
The Coliseum Game Shop.
Nah.
Emotional damage.
It's not in the same, uh, it's not in the same, uh. Strip mall thing because I don't like the damage emotional damage, but you have to drive past it. Uh, to get to like, it's like a couple of blocks over from it. And like. Is anyone still like processing emotions from that as you drive, as you like drive by it or. Uh, Leia, since you'll be in your own vehicle unless you drove to the. On shop to catch the van. Um. It wouldn't have any emotions about that. There is a, uh, it is an empty building now, by the way. Um. Even even driving. Uh. Regular speed, there there's nothing in that particular, like the game shop is like gone.
Uh, yeah, Felix is, Felix is really like not. It's kind of a sore subject for for sure.
Link is quiet and just. Like staring out the window opposite the uh. The the strip mall.
Mm hmm.
So. That's your, that's everyone's gotten emotional damage. Makes me feel pretty good as a GM, probably, probably says something about me. Uh, but you you arrive, you'll you'll get to the pack office. We'll say you all get there just about the same time. Uh, we'll do the Vegas vacation thing where everybody pulls into the parking lot just around the same time. Um, so now you are all together this morning. Uh, I'm not gonna make anyone roll for this. Is oddly quiet here? Like. Uh, after announcing candidacy, you would think this pack office would at least. Look busy from the outside, but it doesn't look very busy at all as you all park.
Great. It's another trap.
So why would you never? How dare you? How very dare you?
Um, can I like look around the building and see if there's any windows that we can look through that doing thing? Do I see anybody inside?
Sure, uh, there there are those big weird, it's like in a former H and R block, so it's got those big weird windows that are supposed to invite people in, but the blinds are halfway down. Uh, as you look in. The building is dark. There is no one there. The door is unlocked if if you try to handle. Um, but it 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 seems like a regular strip mall. Everything seems perfectly fine.
I hope they were expecting volunteers. Should we go inside?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, let's go. Uh, everybody's here, right? Jules has arrived, Leah's here, right?
Yeah, everyone has arrived.
It's very sure. Make sure. Alright, so I guess I'll go first. So Link's gonna go ahead and go inside.
Great. Uh does anyone do anything before? Is is anyone else wanting to do anything before? Do you wanna say anything to anyone before go inside into the new scene inside the P A C office?
I don't really know what I would say to anybody.
But uh, it's empty. It is set up. There are desks. There's like this weird cubicle walls that are like half walls. Um there is a back office, but there is a, there are computers. They are not on, there are filing cabinets um that are locked when you try them. But except for a lack of people, it looks like it should be, there is like a big weird poster of Coach Gristle like in the back corner and he's done like a weird, like he's tried to Ted Lasso himself. Only it's like go fight, win. So it's like trying to be Ted Lasso, but it's like much closer to Anthony Stewarthead's character. Yeah, but except for the lack of people and lights on, it looks like it should be, there should be things happening in this room.
But nobody's here.
Nobody's here.
Should be have gone somewhere else.
Uh does he have an office?
There's an office in the back.
God, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna go see if I can get into the office.
The office door is locked, but you could always try uh escape artist finesse, or you could hammer at the door if you so wish. But it is, it is, it is mortally locked.
I am going to try and pick lock.
I was gonna say, I would like to try an alertness roll to see if I can locate the keys inside the building.
Oh, yeah, uh both things can be true at the same time.
I'm not gonna be doing much, cause it was a fail, so.
I mean, it is okay, though.
Now bear in mind, I'm looking for any keys, not just the keys for this office.
Um Felix is gonna notice that Leah obviously doesn't know what she's doing, picking a lock, and so he's gonna go in and do it, cause I got a fourteen.
Uh we've got a nine, so he's gonna get distracted by apparently the uh box of donuts that was brought in to help stage the place and is eating another donut.
Uh as you eat the donut, it is relatively stale. And it's like one of those sour cream blueberry ones, so it was already a little stale tasting to begin with when it's fresh. And this is just like, yeah. Uh I I I will say, uh Leia, uh Felix does um I guess you could charitably in your own mind saying assist you in in the door uh unlocking shenanigans or just takes over from you if you're feeling toasty about it. Uh but but the the door does get uh jimmy'd open, as it were.
That's fine.
It's all about finger control.
Uh the Mister Gristle, I guess, like he's he's going by Coach Gristle for this campaign, which is weird. Coach Trissel's uh pack office, it has a computer and a chair and a couple of other chairs for guests and a little filing cabinet. Um but it looks like a regular office.
Ooh, I just thought of something. Are there any, can can some, can uh we roll an alertness to see if there's cameras in this? In this office?
You can always roll an alertness. Oh my god, I did, actually I did think about that, but I thought about it for a different reason. But yes, you can roll an alertness to see if there are cameras.
Roll for cameras.
Roll for cameras.
I got a fourteen again. Are there any cameras watching us do nefarious things to this?
Uh no, there are no cameras, but there is a weird cord coming out of the computer that seems to leave through a wall and it's like a, it's like a, it's like a beefy cord. So like, it's like a weird external cord. Um that definitely does not like, it should be there. Uh is uh Link and Alex, were your alertness rolls also for cameras or were you alertness saying other things? Okay, uh Alex, there is a guy in the parking lot that is across the parking lot away from the building and is kind of looking at it. So that's what Alex sees. Uh Link, um underneath the box of donuts, you find a small key that will fit into a filing cabinet.
Awesome. That was the next thing I was gonna go looking for. Um I have a key to the filing cabinet, so it's not like I'm breaking into it. Uh I'm gonna start checking the filing cabinets and see which one I can open.
Will be it's, uh
Um I think our resident computer girl should start maybe looking at the computer.
Yeah, I was wondering actually if she could look for like the footage.
Maybe me and do anything can follow the cord and see where the goes.
Yeah, I'll follow with you.
There's some old dude watching us from across the parking lot.
You cannot tell if the dude is old. Okay, yes, fine, that is fair. Um alright, so when you get your time, I need uh Link. I need you to give me, what do I need you to give me?
I'm just trying cabinets until I find the one the key fits for, so.
No, it's more what information you're gonna get. Give me a culture roll. I wanna see, I wanna see what the dice give you for a culture roll.
Terrible. Almost always roll terribly for culture.
No, you're gonna get something, so it won't be terrible. It just may not be what you expected.
Oh, you rolled science.
Why did it roll science? Weird.
I don't know. That's weird.
Uh, why did I roll alert?
I'll I'll just get that, it's fine. I'm just kidding you. Okay, alright.
Couldn't even reroll the cultural, cause it's pair threes. Terribly. I always roll terribly for culture.
Is one.
Uh so here's the weird thing about what you find the filing cabinets. These are basically duplicates of the information that you found in Tove's Loaves. Like in the, like in the filing cabinets from Tove's Loaves.
I called this a trap.
Uh okay, and so uh uh and Alex and Leia, you're going after the cord. Is that what's happening or Felix?
Yes.
Is going after the cord?
I, yeah, I'm I'm following.
Okay. So uh the cord is short plugged into the computer. It actually goes into like a cement wall and someone drilled in to send the cord out. Uh before he can leave the room, um Jules, as he boot up the computer, uh you notice there is a weird root, root map file. That gives you very Five Nights at Freddy's vibe. It looks like it's a whole bunch of connected camera systems um that are angled in the sort of way where someone could manipulate footage if they so wished. Also find a tab for Saint Centurion, Saint Centurion Ridge Hospital, cause I didn't think about hospital lane.
Um so first of all, the cameras, where exactly are the cameras?
Uh pretty much anywhere there's a camera at an intersection or facing a building.
Okay, okay.
That would be a public, so except for like private property where you'd have to like actually hack into something. All uh you could basically scroll through all public cameras in town from this computer.
Guys, um all of the public cameras are um on this computer. All the feeds are on the computer.
Oh, are all of, okay, so is the wire, maybe the wire is coming, the cameras to here?
And I don't know. I just know that I can literally like, I'm flipping through camera feeds from all over the city right now on this computer.
You watched someone like run a red light on Third Avenue.
I call that out too.
Past your favorite bookstore.
Yeah, um somebody just ran a red light, um and I like scrolling through like all, this is how they were able to get the footage.
Drop their ice cream. Like you just watched some kid drop their ice cream outside of the donut shop near the pawn shop.
Yeah, no, I think this is how, this is how they got the footage that they manipulated. Um somehow they are tapped into all of the camera systems, all of the city camera systems.
Could it be that cord? I'm starting to do with that thing that Felix is.
I'm thinking either like the cord goes to like whatever hub is connecting all of the cameras and then that or all of the cameras are being run to this through to this cord that is already coming. But either way, if we break the cord, then the camera feeds stop. I feel like we should stop the cameras.
Yeah, definitely. And then what did I find about the hospital? You had said something about the hospital?
Someone is trying to hack in to the hospital. Like like they're trying various passwords. It's like a, it's like one of those things that old people do when they have like a tab and they're working on something.
Right.
And and they don't, like it's like someone's trying to be a hacker man and is not very good at what they're doing, but they're trying to get medical records for some reason.
Um somebody, whoever, they're trying to get medical records as well. Um but they haven't been able to get in, that they, um they're hacking by trying to guess passwords. Is there a way with my critical success that I? Can I tell what?
Can you tell who, like where the person who's trying to hack into the hospital? Like can you tell where they're at? Like can you trace their like IP address or something?
Well, I think they were doing it from this computer before they got up. Is that correct or are they doing it from somewhere else?
Uh they are trying to get into the pediatric ward.
But like they were, they were doing it from this computer or are they doing it from somewhere else and it's just, okay. Um.
From this computer, yeah, but but there are there is one corrupted IP address and there are two other active IP addresses. But but the IP addresses are gonna be a large swath of area. Uh but this is a network connection with computers that are connected together.
Okay, um so I have a question.
By the way, I don't know internet, so people don't get mad at me if I'm misrepresenting. I'm basically hacker manning this, so don't get mad at me. I'm making it up as I go along.
I know, that's actually right along. I'm right there with you. Um I'm about to ask something that is probably incredibly stupid. Um and I don't know how this works, so bear with me. Is there a way with my critical success that I rolled? Or I can roll another one. It doesn't, I mean, maybe not a critical success. I can roll another computer. Is there a way that I would be able to set something up on this computer? Okay, first of all, is there a webcam attached to this computer?
Yes.
Okay.
Computers have webcams now. It's very disconcerting.
Is there a way that I could set this up? Okay, I wanna do a few things. Um first thing I wanna do is, is there a way that I can set this up to alert me on my phone or my computer when somebody comes back and tries to hack? Or does anything on this computer again?
Only if you're willing to let them know that they're being hacked. Like it would be, it would be a very high difficulty. Like I'll let you roll for that higher difficulty, for it to be like ninja, ninja only I know. But there is a ninety-five percent chance they would know that you, that somebody is spying on them and they would be able to trace that to you.
Okay.
Very high difficulty, especially in the timeframe you have, which is going to run short for a reason, which is very apparent.
Then my next question is, um can I? Is there a way that I can figure out whose records are trying to get? Um and also would I be able to like hack in and change the password to something that only I know so that they can't get into it?
Uh okay, so I'm gonna have you give me a uh, give me a technology roll. I'll have you do a technology roll for this.
Um okay.
Alex, I guess.
I was just saying, I'm gonna do the same thing I did for the last one. I'm gonna use a an idea point to give myself an edge on this.
You have a phrase, cause you have to use a phrase if you use an idea point. You need a phrase.
Jinkies.
Alright, that's fabulous, thank you. Um while that is happening. Um Alex, I want you to make a choice. Are you gonna go talk to the guy staring at the pack office or are you gonna stay in the pack office?
I'm gonna go outside and talk to the guy.
Fabulous. Um alright, I I I love this journey for you. Um yeah, I promise, not Ivanus, you're not, you're not running into a different trap, but you are all in a trap, of course. Um so Jules with um with year seventeen, uh they're not, they they're trying something, but it's obviously they're not familiar with what hacking is. So they're basically trying to like dox one of the sweet nurses that work in pediatrics to like break in. From what you can tell looking at logs, they're not looking for anything in particular. They're either looking for just a tribe of data or some like pattern that they haven't found yet, but they, like they're looking for something. It's just they're not doing a good job of doing it. Uh but you can totally reset the like they have like a weird little password thing they're using to try to break passwords. I'll let you reset that so that you have control over that if you want. So like you can like, you can like any desk remote in, that's the one thing I learned from Pierogi. Like, I'll let you set up an any desk setup, essentially.
Know what that is, but I will take it. Um my thought is, is that I I obviously don't want the hospital to be locked out. So like in a couple of days, I'll email them and be like, as like the administrator, I'll like hack in and like email them as the administrator and be like, sorry guys, we changed the password. Here you go. But just long enough for us to figure out what's going on.
That's fabulous. Um so Alex, you're gonna go outside. Alex is you outside. Uh Link, the donuts are a little stale. You are, uh you find information that basically looks like information from Tove's Loaves. You come across what looks like a hospital document of some kind for uh for a kid, um eight-year-old Sabrina. And as you read the first name, you hear a noise and then everyone in the back office also hears the noise um of tangas as tangas come in through the ceiling. And there'll be four tangas, uh before the tanga battle. Alex, there is, so the guy is relatively tall, um begrudgingly even for you. He's pretty handsome. Um he has a, he has a very like angular jawline. He's got like Keanu Reeves-esque features. Um he's wearing like a black trench coat. As you approach, he he kind of looks and goes, are you, are you with the, with the P A C? You volunteer?
Uh we were looking to volunteer, but there's nobody here.
Though there, there wouldn't be. Um I I think, I I think you shouldn't stay. I think it's bad. You should go home if you know what's well for you.
Why would I do that?
You do not want to get involved with Coach Gristle. So we have to call him coach. You should not want to get involved with McKinley. Not worth it. You can go home while you still can.
Well, I mean, my friends are inside, so I would have to go get them and.
You should all go home then, while you are still friends, before he destroys you.
Oh, wow. He destroys volunteers?
He destroys everyone. He is unhappy. He does not know how unhappy he is, but he's is not good person. You should go while you still can. Which are your best friend?
Yeah, sure. I, I'll, I'll go pass that along.
Yes. You should, he's, he's Batman. You should go.
Sure, alright. I'll be right back.
A- as you are saying that, um, that is when the, um. Tangas descend inside the office. They come from, they come from the feeling. They like break the like. Weird sad ceiling tiles that all those offices have and, uh, except, actually no, everybody will. Roll me some little fashioned initiative. Tangas only got a three. God love them.
Are we doing follow me?
I was about to ask. Cause Link's like, bad guys.
You literally shout bad guys?
Yes.
You're like half the steel, don't do your mouth shouting bad guys. It's great.
I would not follow cuz I'm outside.
Alright.
I'll follow.
Since I don't know there's bad guys.
I mean, you're going to see as you come back into the building, but feel free, uh, Alex, feel free to roll cuz it, it's not far away enough that you won't be able to get there, so.
Well, I'm still pondering crazy Russian guy telling me to go home.
That's fair. So Link, you got a fifteen?
Uh, how many people are doing follow me cuz that alters my number? So, eh, Felix, yes, no? You're muted, sir. I can't hear you.
Yes, I will, I will do it.
Okay, so that puts me at an eighteen. That means the people who are doing it need to roll a D four and that.
One.
I will go after Felix.
Well, I, I rolled, okay, well, I, I rolled a four and then I rolled again cuz you got a four, so I got, and I got a three, so.
So I'm at eighteen. That puts Leah at seventeen, uh, Felix at fifteen and Jules at fourteen.
Alright, and you're all ahead of the tangos, so.
Except me.
Oh, you're all cuz the tango's got three. So every, literally, you're all ahead of the tangos, uh, so. Link, it's not so much that they crash through the ceiling. It's that they bring a smell with them. They somehow manage, even though they are dry, to smell like dead wet bird. So do with that what you will, Link, but. They definitely supplant the smell in the room.
Yeah, so Link's gonna throw the, the half-eaten donut he's got in his hand at the tanga. Um, I don't expect it to actually do anything other than splatter on it.
Yeah, I'm not even gonna make you roll for that. I'm just gonna say it does and the tanga doesn't get the reference.
And, uh. We can be seen from, I can be seen from the outside where I'm standing, right?
Yes, the creep, the quote-unquote creepy Russian man can see you. Well, he can't really. He's far enough away that like. Unless you turn a light on, he's not really gonna see you. Uh, and no one else is really come into the area at the time, so.
Right, right, right. The, what I'm saying is if I, if I morph, is he gonna see it? Okay, if he's not gonna see it if I morph, I'm gonna go ahead and spend my action morphing.
That's fair. Uh, please, uh, please put, uh, please announce your number and any exclamation you make as you, as you morph. And anything else you wanna do after?
Um. Well, I know my number's five-one-zero, so do, do, do. Uh, and then he's gonna. Uh, he, he's just gonna yell, I don't know, it, it's, it is.
It's in the thing.
Five oh eight.
Five oh eight, whatever.
You put in five, you put in five ones here, you get a little error message. Please try again.
He's getting hit five oh eight. He's like, alright, um, it's bad guys. Let's kick their butts.
Fabulous. Uh, anything else you'd like to do besides morphing cuz you can still do a free action and technically move, I guess.
Um.
There's not a lot of room. None of you are going to have to move much except for, except for Alex. Uh, really?
Uh, not really, um, there's no point in really moving too far cuz the tanga is just gonna chase me. Um, and I don't have any innocent people to protect since it's just teammates in the building besides bad guys.
There are no innocent people in politics. Leah, it's your turn.
So I'm gonna go ahead and morph. I'm gonna go ahead and put four-one-five into my morpher. And, uh. Just, I think she's at this point started just saying. Here we go again. And, uh, as she, as she morphs. And. Oh, can you not hear me?
No, I can't. I was gonna say. I'll see morph. Out of the corner of your eye, you think you see something. Uh, but it's just far enough in the corner. You can't tell what it is. And that's all I'm gonna leave you with for right now. It doesn't affect your morph. Your morph happens the way it's supposed to, but just in the corner of your eye, it's something. It's not. I'm gonna expressly say it's not Ivan, but it has this kind of like. Evening purpley effect to it. It's just in the corner revision and, and you just don't have any more information than that.
Okay, um. I would probably try, once I'm able to, is to ta, maybe instead of attacking, um. Look to see. See if I can see more, like what that thing is.
You could do, uh, you can do a cultural and our alertness role. What you can do.
I will do a, an alertness cuz it's higher.
Sure.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't see that like, it's like that thing where you're trying to look at the worm on your eye and you can't see the worm again. But I will tell you, you do notice that when the tangas are kind of like. Trying to get into formation or whatever they're doing. They're avoiding the computer. Like they, like they're avoiding the desks. Felix, it's your turn. Big smelly hybrid people birds.
I know he can't see us from outside, but I do think it would be funny if we just like. Like went up to the blinds, closed them, and then all of a sudden you saw a bunch of flashing of different colored lights from outside. Like.
He's Russian. He'd be like, must be Tuesday.
Okay. Um, I'm also going to morph. Um, I'm gonna type in one-one-zero into my. Um, wrist morpher and my Centurion morpher and I'm going to. Yell out pink range power. Flashes of pink sparkles all around me.
Uh, are, are you, are you moving? You have movement you can do and free actions you can do.
You know what? I'm just gonna get this out of the way cuz I wanna do it and I will. I'm going to take my, um. I'm going to retrieve my, um. My crescent axe and I'm going to slice this cord that is coming from the computer into the wall.
Okay, cuz it is an inanimate object. I will, uh. I will allow you, uh, to do a finess role. Uh, which is what you normally use for the blade, right? I believe so. Yeah, give me that finess role.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, uh, Jules, the computer goes dark. After, as you are done doing your thing, as Felix slices through the. Record.
I hope that shut the cameras down and not just the computer.
Who knows? Who could tell? But they're also big stinky bird people here, so there's also.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna type in, uh, two-one-six, um. And, um. I don't think she's gonna say anything this time. She's just gonna type in two-one-six and sigh as the computer like died in front of her. And she morphs.
Hold on to that thought, Jules.
Oh, dear. Okay.
You morph. But it takes you longer than it should. You have a vision of that dream where you followed your father. Only you can see Ellie following you as you're following your father.
Okay.
But then, eh, you, so like Felix, like. There's like a weird thirty seconds where Jules is actively morphing and it gets up when we're like. Should I say something? And then the Blue Ranger is there. There's like a weird thirty seconds where like. Something didn't go correctly. Or did go correctly, as it were. It was weird.
Um. You good?
I'm awesome.
Yeah. And then I'm gonna go and like run towards a tanga.
It's like, don't talk to you with this. Alright, uh. Alex, as you get to the door, you can smell the tangos before you see them. So you open the door and you see the tangos. Just like, um. I think La, uh, Leia, you noticed this, right? Yeah, you noticed this. Uh, you noticed the tangos are like. They're ready to attack, but they are actively avoiding desks and the computers. Can you hear for you to notice from where you come into the room, Alex?
I'm gonna. Tear their heads up, um, hey guys, um. You know, there's something going on with computers outside of just like. Them being. Being used as surveillance, um, cuz. Scary stinky birdmen are actively avoiding them and that's interesting. So keep that in mind. Not sure what that means.
Alex, you hear that in your like, or for communicator because you're not morphed yet. You can morph whenever you so wish.
Uh, yeah, so I'll be mid-sentence like crazy Russian bird guys, great. Uh, and then just mumble something about, uh. Jenny Jenny eight six seven five, then type in three oh nine and, uh, morph.
That's, that's her number. That is her number indeed, uh. Alex, you take about fifteen more seconds than you should. While you're morphing, you feel the power of the spectrum, but in your brain, you hear that song again. And it's like, it's like you're at a stage show hearing it. Like, it's real up close to the back of your skull kind of thing. But you don't have much time to think about it cuz the big stinky bird, one of them is gonna come and grapple you cuz you're closest.
Oh, wow. Stinky birds, crazy Russians. Oh, by the way, we're supposed to leave before we don't like each other.
Jules mumbles something unintelligibly under her breath.
I feel like twelve is lower than your, uh, than your toughness, right?
Uh, yeah.
Probably, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. So. Wait, what did you, what did you mumble under your breath, Jules?
I don't know. She just mumbled something.
It's a secret. Anyways, so they do not, uh, they do not grapple you, Alex, but there's like stinky bird right up. In your grill. It's like being at a mosh pit. Link, it's your turn. Top of the round.
Cool, 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 um. They're avoiding the computers. That's nice to know, um.
Question is why? Aren't you curious?
Uh, vaguely, but they need to be removed before we can investigate the computers further, so. Um. Link's first response isn't his power weapon, even though he should probably use his power weapon more often. He's, um. He's gonna try and do like a jumping hammer blow with both fists. Cause he doesn't wanna knock them into the furniture, but he does wanna hurt them. So like, doing that jumping power like. Hammer fist thing should knock it to the ground instead if he knocks it down.
I love that journey for you. Uh, that would be probably my role, I think, right?
So I'm going for.
Yeah.
I got an eleven. I think I missed.
You know, well, no, here's the thing. So you know how you said you didn't want to hit them into the computers?
Yeah.
So you, you know what you end up doing in spite of yourself?
Hitting him into the computer?
Yeah, so here's the fun thing. They're not really computers. They're computer shells. With little bits of Ivanus energy stored inside of them. So as you, as you hammer, as you John Cena, the bird. Uh, the, the, the closest tanga into, uh, what you're hoping is not the computer, it gets rappled in this. Um. Bruise some looking purple lightning. And it turns back into like two very freaked out regular birds very quickly.
Oh, that's convenient.
Yeah, but now you've got two very freaked out smaller birds in here. They don't smell, but birds are, yeah.
Yeah, but they're not trying to attack me.
Uh, not yet. Happy you know of.
Fair enough. Hey, I knocked one of the tangas into the computer and it turned it into birds.
Smaller birds.
Are they, are, do they seem angry to anybody else? Or scared?
Uh, yes, Leia, I'm not even gonna make you roll animal handling. These two birds that became a sentient humanoid stinky bird person. Are not happy to now be birds again in this new location in unfamiliar place. So as it is your turn, un- unless, Link, you have something else you wish to, wish to do.
Um, I'm gonna move away from the birds towards one of the other tangas.
Fabulous, uh, yes, Leia, they are, they are not happy. They've had a bad day. It's a bad day for those birds.
Bad day, bad day, bad day, bad day.
Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to kick another tanga into. The computers.
Great, give me a micro.
Yeah. The hell is going on? I have not, I've not done a single good thing.
Uh, I will say. You kick a tanga, but it's like a weird angle, so it doesn't quite go off you want. You do notice. The two birds that are pissed off that are now flying up towards the vent trying to get out. They are dripping little black dots onto the floor.
Gross.
Okay, um.
And some loose stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty much hurt my, my, my role, so.
Felix, it is your turn.
Um, I'd like to do a similar thing, except instead of trying to kick a tanga. Into a computer, I'd like a ki, I'd like to kick a computer at a tanga.
Oh, you're gonna golf score. You're gonna, you're gonna, whoever the John Cena of golf is, you're gonna do that?
The John Cena of golf is like.
I don't know.
Um, yeah, probably Rice and DeChambeau, but, um.
I don't know that.
Sure, but yeah.
Uh, I guess.
At a golf bar for like a year and a half, so.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
A lot of golfers' names. Okay, um, I'm.
I, I'm gonna. I'm gonna say that's a hard thing?
I was gonna say finesse cuz I'm gonna, I'm doing like a little spin kicky. What, what cha, and it's gonna fly and hit the tanga.
Okay, yeah, cuz it's. It's also, yeah, 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 sure. I, I think, I think for golfing, uh, golfing an object, that, yeah, it's fine. I'll find, we're all fine here.
Thirteen?
Thirteen. So. The toughness of the tanga is.
And it kind of goes there, but it's a computer, so.
So, the issue. The issue is that you kick the computer. But you're kind of, your foot ends up going to the screen and you take one point of damage. As. but you're kind of, your foot ends up going to the screen, and you take one point of damage as a little, uh, it's a little, uh, Ivan ooze energy ball inside of the thing. So you take, you take a point of, you take a point of damage, uh.
You know, I was, uh, before today's game, I told myself that, um, I tend to, um, take these games too seriously, and I get frustrated with myself. And so I was like, you know what? I'm just gonna play by the seat of my pants today. And.
No, but it's good.
It's, well, it has not served me well two times in a row. I've caused myself a pile of damage, and I probably ruined everything with the cameras and the computer by cutting the.
Dun, 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 you know what?
We don't know that.
I ruined it first, so, you know.
To be fair, everyone thinks you're the dead guys anyways, because someone running manned you. So things can be a lot worse.
Uh, when you first thi- when the computer thing first happened, I did think you were gonna say that all the computers were gonna turn on, all, like, their webcams up, and they were all gonna be hurting us, destroying this office. We were gonna get framed again.
Nope, if you had gone to the other location, that's what would have happened, but you chose this one. Jules, it's your turn. Uh, Felix got their karma for breaking the wires apparently by getting electrocuted by one of these computer thingies. So, there you go.
You know what, though? There should, there, there's no karma, because you, either way, now they don't have access to the comput- to the cameras, because you turned off the computer. So, either way, we said, we did what we set out to do. Um, okay, so we are, so we're trying to ki- get the tangos into these other computers. Is that like what everybody's been doing?
Well, it seems like an easy way to, to like, just to stop them.
Okay.
Versus like breaking their health down or whatever.
Okay.
Or at least turn them back into tinier birds, tinier pissed off birds. But they don't smell, so, you know.
I wanna do something to do that, but I wanna use finesse. So, I need ideas, because I do not wanna roll anything else. I am bad.
So, 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 wait, no, you're trying to, you, you also wanna John Cena of golf the computer into the tanga? Is that what?
You wanna ballroom dance, grab him, spin him.
You could, okay, so finesse is like, is like, um, pointy things and also like martial arts, so, if you wanna do like a fun martial art thing to do that, or if you wanna like use your blade blaster as a sword and.
Oh, okay, then maybe.
Stab the tanga into the, um.
Yeah, let's, let's, oh.
One of the other things you can do, because it's all martial artsy, is, and it's finesse, is you could, you know, sweep the legs of the tanga so it falls into the computer.
That's true. Um.
That's a good.
I think I'm gonna do, I think I'm gonna try to s- to, hmm, this is just not gonna go well. Um, I'm, I think I'm gonna try to stab the, the, the thing into the computer with my blade blaster, because I get a shift up for doing it on my, with my blade blaster.
Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna try Zoro one of the tangas. That's perfectly fine. Pretty logical.
Why can't I press right buttons?
I believe in you.
I don't. Um, nineteen, maybe I do.
Nineteen. You use Zoro, uh, one of the tangos into the computer, and the burst of lighting, it turns into two smaller birds. It drips a little bit of black goo. Uh, Jules, out of the corner of your eye, there is a dude standing across the parking lot in a black trench coat who is watching the building.
Um, Alex said something when he came in about somebody being outside, right?
Twice.
Right, okay.
To be fair, you told us he couldn't see inside.
He can't see outside, but you can see outside.
Okay, so he can't see us, but I can see him, basically, is what's going on. Okay. Sad, that old guy is still staring.
Actively like looking in the windows, like he's, it's, it's that weird thing where he's like looking at the building, but he's not looking at, like.
Okay.
It's, it's not about.
That creepy old guy is still staring at the building, by the way.
He's like thirty-two. He's not old.
I know that, but.
We're playing teenagers.
Right, teenager.
That's ancient, like teenager.
Yeah, exactly.
When I was a teenager, thirty-two was old, but I'm forty, it's like, now that I'm forty, it's like thirty-two, all-you-child.
It's so, it's so painful. Anyways, Alex, it's your turn.
Um, so, bird guy just tried to grab you, but didn't work, so I'm gonna pull up my drill and say screw it, and stab him.
Uh, please take an extra story point for an amazing drill-based fun. Lottie, if you're watching, can you make one of your famous t-shirts, uh, with a Black Ranger on it that says Drill Baby Drill?
Lottie is currently playing a game as a lesbian vampire, so she is probably.
Oh, fabulous. Never mind, I'm not gonna bother Lottie. Good for you, Lottie. Uh, that's a ten. Thank you. Um, so that ten, since you're not actively trying to push anything into the computer, uh, it's, it's a crowded location. Um, so the ten, it just doesn't go anywhere. Uh, but there are only two more tangos, and they're not close enough to you. Link, one of them is close enough, it's go. Like you. So, there's that.
Ringtone.
What about, do you say ringtone? Is that what you said?
I said, bring a tone.
I also heard ringtone, so.
Uh, that hurts.
Wow, that.
I think we all in our helmets heard ringtone, and we all looked at him like, what?
It's like, what ringtone?
As he, as he punches.
It's just hilarious that everybody heard the same thing.
I think every time we like try to hit something really hard now, we should say.
Ringtone.
Well, unfortunately, Link, as we head back to the top of this round, you are grappled by big stinky bird. Uh, because it got a twenty-four, and I can't imagine your bite or eva- or your toughness or evasion is higher than.
I, I, I am definitely affected by that.
Yes.
Does the grapple surprise him?
No, that's not really how surprised. It's not really how surprise works. Surprise is more like beginning of combat thing. Uh.
I'm trying to give him an out.
Now, you're, uh, basically big smelly, uh, black big bird is now holding on to you for dear life, squeezing you like an accordion.
All right, uh, since I'm right there, and I'm wearing a helmet, I'm gonna headbutt the tanga.
That's fair. That might get you out of the grapple.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, that is higher than their toughness. Uh, tanga's toughness is fourteen, by the way, folks, at least for regular tangos and not the super tangos. Um, so you, would you like to headbutt it into a computer, into a fellow ranger, uh, into, into the office?
I'll headbutt it into a computer to get it to, uh, poofda.
Uh, you do this, and poof does. Um, you see the, the black drippy dots of ooze, as it were. There is one tanga left and a whole bunch of confused pissed off birds, but they probably won't hurt you too badly. Uh, Leia, it's your turn.
So, I'm gonna try to do what I did fail to do the last time.
Sure.
See if I can maybe do it this time. Seventeen.
Seventeen. Uh, you actually succeed. Were you aiming for putting the tanga into the computer?
Yeah, that was the plan.
Okay, so you do this, um, and you have ended combat, because I'm not gonna make you combat a whole bunch of confused pissed off birds. You can if you want to, but they're just eventually gonna go up into the raptors, and it's someone else's problem.
I was just gonna open the door and let them fly out the door.
Okay. Uh, so two things. First thing is, um, the, the birds will eventually leave, because they're birds. So they'll be looking for the sky. Um, but as you're kind of looking at the birds going up, there are no cameras in this building. Like, the whole thing with the cameras is they bend places to frame you. There are no cameras here. Uh, the other part of it is as, uh, Link, as he opened the door to let the birds out, there's no one across the parking lot, but the tree next to where he was standing has like a, like, there's a, there's like a piece of paper and something stabbed into it.
Well, I'm gonna demorph where it can't be seen, and then I'm gonna go collect a piece of paper.
Um, okay. Um, I think Link let the birds out. I'm pretty sure, because I think you were close, unless somebody else.
I think that was supposed to be a, a misquote of a song. Yeah.
Oh, okay, I understand. Um, okay, so, would you like to read the paper before you, uh, before you bring inside? Get, no, well, I, would you like to read it at some point, or are you just gonna like? Okay, uh, are you, are you leaving the knife in the tree, or are you bringing the knife with you?
Well, if I can read the paper before I touch it, I wanna do that. And then depending on what it says, I may, I'm just gonna take the whole thing with knife and all.
Okay, uh, the note says, McKinley. Meet me in our special place. Love, Constantine.
Isn't McKinley the coach?
Yes. Coach McKinley Gresson.
Apparently, apparently he's got a lover in Constantine. Yeah, I'm, I'm bringing it inside. I'm like, uh, I gotta find a weird note, but no old guy.
And a fancy Russian knife. Again, he's thirty-two. It hurts my balls so badly. Uh, the, the knife is like, you don't even need to know about knives. This is the fancy Russian knife, like, not like super expensive, but if he brought it to Ernie, probably like sell it for quite a bit of money, but it's like, it's like a fancy, fancy knife.
Yeah, that's like an ancient knife you got there.
Oh, my god.
Like, from the. I know, right? From the nineteen hundreds. At some point, yeah, it looks like. It's from last millennium. It's amazing.
Jules. You get a call from your mom.
Oh, boy.
Yes, I know, they're all payback for emotional damage. That's fine. Are, Jules, are you answering the call from your mom?
Oh, I didn't realize you said me.
Forgot.
I, no, I just, I didn't, I didn't hear Jules. I didn't hear Jules, and I, so I thought you were talking to somebody else, sorry. Um.
No, yeah.
Yes, I am gonna answer the phone. Anybody that is around me, like, she like looks at the phone and just, yes, mother?
Oh, hi, sweetie. You sound like you're having a bad day. Are you, are you doing okay?
You're joking, right?
Off the gas, lady.
I, I mean, I, I, maybe, uh, I mean, you sound like you're having a very good day. I was just, uh, just, uh, got home. I was, uh, running out to our, to our favorite like French bakery. I was getting some like maple buns. Do you, uh, are you, do you have some free time today? I can, I can bring you some, or I guess I, or you can come home and get them, I guess. I don't know. Whatever, whatever works for you.
Can I ask you a question?
Always.
So it's not just dad suffering from episodes, then, is it?
Like, uh, Survivor?
Right. No, mom, I'm fine. Um, I don't want any, anything from, uh, no, I'm fine.
Uh, the, okay, uh, but I just, you know, I was thinking of you, sweetie. Uh, wanted to make sure you're doing, you're doing okay. Uh, I hope your studies are going well and you're staying safe, uh, since apparently we have weird things happening in the city now. Uh, but, but yeah, just, yeah, you, you know you're always welcome at home anytime, right?
Right, yeah. Um, hey, you know, I think dad was having a really rough day, um, as well. He, he's was grading papers, and it was just not going very well. Um, maybe you should, I don't know, maybe you guys should go out to dinner and just have a really relaxing, have a relaxing date night.
Yeah, we were looking at doing like a Fogo de Chao, uh, for, because he can't, it's the weirdest thing. He can't find any of the, of the, like, you know, when someone turns on a paper and it's like ten page, even any of the tenth pages of any of the papers she's supposed to grade today. It's the weirdest thing.
Yeah, that is weird. Um, so yeah, I think, I think maybe that would be really nice of you if you, you know, took him out for a little while tonight, and just kinda got his, got his mind off of, got his mind off of everything.
I'm not gonna talk about the row. We're, we're both thoroughly over the row.
Ah, yeah, haha, that's so funny. Um, so, hey, um, while you guys are gone, I might stop by the house for a little bit. I, I, I need a, I need some, some space and some, some quiet to, to study. Is that gonna be, is that okay?
Oh, no, yeah, well, yeah, we can, uh, you know, we might head by, by the Historical Society. Uh, they were doing, they were doing like an exhibit on genealogy. It looked really interesting. Uh, so I might, I might, I might stop by there tonight. That might be nice. Something to take, something to take dad's mind off at the row, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Um, but yeah, no, I'll probably be gone when you guys get home, but I'll lock up, so. Have fun.
Thank you, sweetie. Yeah, uh, we will, uh, love you.
Yeah, love you too. Um, and then I'm gonna hang up and, um, I'm gonna have to go search my parents' house in a little while, so I will see you guys later.
Oh, is everything okay?
No, no, everything's not okay. My parents are losing their frickin' minds. Um, and I need answers, so I need to go search their house.
Do you want us to come with you?
No, no, I'll be fine. Here, um, she's gonna pull out the drawings that her dad, that she took from her dad. Um, so I had this really weird dream about being in Angel Grove in the desert, um, and I was following my dad, and there was these like crop circles, and there were body parts all over them, and he was going to this really weird building. Um, and when he opened the door, um, Ivan was there. Um, and then today, when I went to my dad's house, he was drawing these pictures, and this, this is what I saw in that dream. And then he, he murmured the, the name, um, um, Siggy, no, no, not Siggy, um, Zordon, Zordon, um. And my mom was acting really weird, and said she had been having these episodes, and he wasn't aging for twenty years, and, uh, just a lot of really weird stuff. And then now my mom called me, and she has no memory of that entire conversation. Um, so I need to go figure out if, if, I, I just, I need to, I just need to go and figure out what's going on with them. Um, but here are the pictures. I don't know if you guys can figure anything out with this. Um, also, when I was morphing, and like at this point, she's just like on a roll, like not taking a breath, just like rambling. Um, I had that vision again when I was morphing, uh, and it was me following my dad, and the new girl was following me. Um, I don't know what that's, what's that, that's about, but I don't know that we can trust her. That's weird. Um, plus, she was texting me about my dad and the desert, and I don't know, the whole situation is really weird, and I don't know who she is and if we can trust her. But here, here's the pictures. I don't know what to do with them. I'm gonna go to my parents' house and break in and, and search their stuff.
Uh, real quick, Jim, um, the way she said, uh, that she, like, the whole Siggy Zordon thing, like, we do, do Alex and Leia know who Zordon is, but the others don't?
Uh, yeah, but you, you specifically, if you saved Santa, you went to the command center.
Yeah.
To get to the portal. So you technically, it was a very brief meeting, but it's hard to forget a giant head and a jaw.
Hot minute, so we've done that much about, though, so I wasn't sure.
We've heard Zordon's name, like Alpha has mentioned Zordon for several times, so we've heard him. We've heard the name before, but like, we don't really have any context as to like, well, at least, um, Jules, myself, and, um, great, um, and, um, Link, um, don't have any sort of, um, like context as to who he is.
So, Zordon?
Yeah, that's what he said before he passed out. Yeah, that's what he said before he passed out cuz my mom was drugging him apparently.
Can, can you repeat the thing about Zordon? Why, what is, what is, uh? In what context did he talk about it? Like, did he, did he say like? Any, what was the?
I, I don't know. He just murmured the name before he passed out. My mom drugged, like I said, he, she gave him drugs so that he would. Pass out. Um, she said he wouldn't remember these episodes when he woke up and.
Hey, uh, Jules, not like, not to like freak you out even more than you probably. But, um, are you sure that that person? That other person that drugged your dad and told you all that stuff was your mom?
That's what I'm wondering too.
And they're this, and that's the same person that called you and didn't know what you were talking about when you mentioned that thing?
Well, now I am.
Is she like, she just stares like?
Okay. Um.
I, 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 I have to get home.
Okay, hold on, but all I'm saying is that if your dad mentions Zordon. Uh, there's nobody who would know Zordon except for us. Like, there's no way unless your dad is a ranger or someone who's very close to the Rangers, you would know who Zordon is.
So, something I didn't mention was, um, he was talking about kids that died. In nineteen sixty-four. Um, like he was there. He said he was in Angel Grove when the murders happened and he got obsessed with trying to solve them. Uh, and there was a, a music festival.
How old is your dad?
I don't.
But I was wondering just a second ago.
I don't have the answer to that question anymore. I don't know. My mom said that, my mom said twenty years ago, my dad stopped aging. Well, if it was my mom, I don't, I, I have to go home, okay? I, I have to figure this out. You guys go, do whatever you need to do. I'm going home.
Um.
I don't like you.
I don't think, yeah, I was gonna say, I, I'll, I'll go with her. I'm. Uh.
I don't know, I just called you kiddo, but you know, here we are.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna go with her cuz I don't think I can help with investigating the thing with the pictures, but, um.
And you know my dad.
Do I?
Is he your teacher or something?
Yeah, he was, he was a teacher, so, yeah, Link.
Link hasn't, hasn't put together.
Yeah, he hasn't figured that out.
Yeah, he hasn't put together that they're family.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, he was. He was your teacher.
Wait. What's his name?
Doctor, Dr. Vern?
Oh, yeah, he was my English teacher for two years. It was great. Wait a minute, you're related to Dr. Vern?
Yeah, remember? He got me to tutor you? So, so glad that you remember me. Anyway, I'm gonna go home now.
I feel like I need to apologize, like, I'm gonna, like, Link's gonna follow behind her as she leaves going, stop, slow down, please, I'm, I'm sorry.
She's just, just gonna roll her eyes and she'll wait up for him, but she'll just like, I, I just, I need to go home.
Alright. So. What do you wanna do? Um, cuz we're getting close to, uh, from people on East Coast, we're getting close to ten P M. Uh, so I think we're gonna start wrapping up here shortly cuz we still have a bit of the adventure left to go. You know, have this note and a knife. From a Russian person. That apparently. Loves the coach, which I guess if they're into werewolves, um. But, uh, but the three of you left in the room. I did have a decision to make, uh, even if Link comes back. So, what is it? What are your thoughts about this?
I'm thinking having a knife in the note just left cuz Link had him.
Oh, he, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have left them behind. If he's following Jewel, he doesn't need the knife in the note.
Uh, we're gonna take them with us, for sure, like.
We, we have to find out what the special place is.
Yeah. Um.
Did we lose somebody?
What?
No?
No?
The cameras just got all weird?
Oh, yeah, uh, John and. Grim just switched places on the camera for some reason.
It probably happened when, um, when John left the conversation cuz he couldn't see him.
When he, when he rage quit? I'll never respect you again.
Has it been like that the whole time and I just didn't realize it?
No, no, I've been watching it. It just changed.
Okay, okay. I seriously thought I was losing my mind for a second. I will fix that. Continue. I am so sorry. I did not mean to interrupt the flow.
No, that's fine, but so you have a, uh. You do know that he is the, the coach of the university here, so he'll have a coaching office. You do know that even if he doesn't come to this building, he does have a P A C, so he will be a visible figure. Probably at least at the next city council meeting, which will be. Shortly, I will collapse time if I need to. Um. You might be able to find him at the Opera House, but honestly, which is the last place he's on. But he's a pretty well-known figure. So there are several ways to go about it. Um. Also, if you don't do anything, you have a cool knife now, so there you go.
Yeah, very cool ancient knife.
My god. Uh, it's a reproduction. It's not ancient, it's just a reproduction.
Right, but it was manufactured in the nineteen hundreds. That was last, so last millennium.
For that old guy.
Oh, my god.
This is why Alpha Five. This is why Alpha Five is out of touch and doesn't understand things.
We went to the moon.
Yeah, I, I think we. Should investigate.
He, he said, get out of here now while we can. While we're still friends.
Get out of here, um, but we also should find out what the secret spot is and maybe.
That's what I wanna do. Yeah, that's what I wanna do too.
So do we wanna maybe check out his school office and see if we can learn anything there? Do we want to maybe ask around the, maybe we should, we go to the school and we should ask, we can ask around other faculty members. See if they know what the secret spot is.
And they're gonna talk to some kids.
That don't even go there.
Yeah, like the, it's, I feel like there has to be, maybe, maybe Ernie. You know, maybe this is something you can like get him.
I say we camp outside his house and follow him.
You can. As a public figure, his address will be known, so you could potentially do that. That is a thing you can.
Okay, if we follow him, that's a good idea, but he, to have seen the note first.
Uh.
And I don't think he's seen the note because we took the note off. So we could put the note back and then we can try and spy on him and see where he goes.
Yeah. Feel like that's a good plan.
Also, while you were waiting to see if he comes by, you could also potentially. Talk about any weird things that may be happening to you, that you might have questions about. Uh, that is also something. That you can do. I, I'm gonna say if you decide, uh. If, if you decide to stake out here, uh, it will take a few hours at minimum. Uh, so you'll have time. Is, is there anything anyone would like? Talk about as you stake out, uh. Lincoln Jules, uh, you, you will be eventually able to come back to the stakeout and, and rejoin, um. We can talk about what you find at the house, uh, off, off camera so that you can, so you have that information, um. Uh, but, but yeah, so. This may be a good place, um, to begin any conversation about questions anyone may, maybe have or anything anyone wants to. Find out information about. You all know some very important things separately.
Like what?
So I will say everything. That people have learned about are all connected. It's something. The fact that you specifically. Felix are having dreams about. Fire at the Enchantress. Not a coincidence.
Well, we all kinda talked about our dreams after they happened.
Mm-hmm.
We were like. Hey, I was on fire and someone else was like, oh yeah, there was fire in my thing too. And then we were like. We, we like kinda talked about our dreams with each other already.
We did. Link was talking about his was a destiny dream.
There wasn't really anything that like came from it to be like.
Except some gnarly scars.
Did you tell anyone you were having a dream about the Enchantress? As you said you were having, you were having a fire dream, did you specifically mention it was the Enchantress you were at?
Oh, I had a new dream. With the Enchantress. At the beginning of this episode.
It, it's.
Yeah, okay, we can talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, but it's specifically that, so.
Okay, um. Have, so, have you guys been having those like same weird dreams? Cuz I have. Keep like, dying in this like fire thing and, um, every time it's like somebody new and like this time it was that like. Weird woman from, um. From the, that, that Enchantress lady. With, with like all the coffins and stuff. Do you think she's like roped into this somehow? Should we? Investigate her at some point?
Uh, Link, can you give me? Uh. It always helps to investigate people, by the way. But Link, give me a cultural with an edge.
I might actually succeed at a cultural for once. Link is uncultured swine, even though I have a deformed culture. Hey, would you look at that?
Yes.
That's the highest I could have gotten.
So, Link. Um. There wasn't a fire for Shay. But. The Enchantress. Did close down under mysterious circumstances in two thousand and four.
So twenty years ago.
At the same time when her dad stopped aging.
Supposedly.
Yes.
The inch.
And there were rumors.
Confused about who the Enchantress is.
The Enchantress is the theater.
Yeah.
It's the theater itself. Not the name of the lady.
The, the one that you had the dream that was crying out. Yeah, the Enchantress is the name of the theater.
I hundred percent had that as the person in my head.
No, that's fair. Always glad to correct that. Um, so Link, these are not substantiated, but there was a rumor. That it closed down because there was a film that. Drove people to the brink of madness and there was an incident at the Enchantress, like, and it's like an urban legend. That kind of gravitated around whatever grade you were in at the time, like it filtered down from the high school through the grades, um. So hearing.
Link wasn't alive twenty years ago. He probably heard the rumor from his mom.
Yeah, you, you, you heard the rumor. So it's like a, it's like a thing where your mom loves the Enchantress, but it's also very much like. Be very on your guard while you're there in case something like this actually happened.
The Enchantress has been closed for twenty years, but we went there for an event?
It was closed twenty years ago.
Yeah, it was closed twenty years ago, but then it reopened.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz Link's mom does like stage work at the Enchantress when she does stage stuff. That's why she, she, that's why she's in, he knows anything about it is cuz it was mom.
Right, 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 right. Should we go there? Should we check that place out?
Uh, didn't we find the pool of like?
No, that was at the Opera House.
Okay, alright, I was wondering.
And the Opera House is where the flowers were, although you didn't check the Enchantress. But there could be flowers there. There could be nothing there.
We haven't been back there since that whole thing, so.
I mean, as long as we don't find the River of Pink ooze under the city, we're good. Cuz we don't have a, a Statue of Liberty to, to play upbeat music and inspire everybody to greatness.
River of Pink ooze. I'm not writing anything down. Don't worry about it. Um.
I don't trust you ever.
That's fair. As you are discussing at least the Enchantress, if not trying to decode other dreams. A car does pull up. It is a. Second generation Hummer, so with someone that bought a Hummer. And then decided to buy a newer Hummer for whatever reason, and it is Coach Gristle, um. And he drives up to his pack, uh, under the cover of darkness, uh. He does not make any noise when he sees what the building looks like, but he does come out of the building. And we are going to end tonight's episode with him. Seeing the notes, muttering under his breath and then ripping it down and swallowing it.
Did they leave the note for him or did, I thought we took it?
I thought you.
Yeah, so he had to see it.
Figured that like the best way to track where he's gonna, to let him.
Ah, fair enough.
So you, you watch him raw dog a wad of paper from god knows where.
That's such a gross term.
Whoa.
Yeah, I think you all touched.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least I rubbed him on my butt.
So Sam generally a clean person, so. It's probably fine and then use, then.
He ate the paper and he does pocket the knife. Like, he's not surprised by. Yes, he's, he's actually, uh, like, he like looks around a little bit. He doesn't have high alertness. I'm not gonna make him roll for it, but he doesn't see you. Wherever you ended up parked at, uh, but he does. Get in his vehicle and, uh, not speed off. But he does drive off. Would you care to follow?
Hmm.
Yes.
Leah, if you're driving, then it doesn't really matter what the rest of them want. I don't know who's driving.
I feel like we'll probably be better off in my car since it's smaller. Uh, than a big damn cargo van. Just a thought.
That's fair. However you wish to get there, if you are following, we will end the episode with you following. And the next episode, Howling Halftime Show. Will show you exactly where you're following to. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for the insanity, the madness and the joy of Power Rangers Centurion. We'll see you in two Wednesdays from now. I and Isabits will see you on Friday night for summer school where there will be zombies. Or zombies, so many zombies, and for some reason a weird silver tentacle. Uh, that pulled road kills character down a hallway at the end of last episode. Um, if you wanna find out more about that, I don't think it's up on our YouTube page and archives yet.
Not yet.
But. But you can still look in, you can still look in the Twitch and old videos and, and see the first episode, I think, right? It hasn't been seven days yet.
I think so. If not, um, I mean, it's, it's, it's been over cuz we had, we missed two weeks or we missed a week, um.
Okay.
Uh, but I should be able to get it up tomorrow. Yeah.
Anyways, there'll be zombies. I promise on Friday night, well, Friday night zombie night, just like T G F during Halloween. Um, and then, uh, stay tuned, us Mondays will be another Echoes of O S S where. Uh, Roadkill will do more Kudzu Luth theme madness. And then we'll be back for more shenanigans next Wednesday, hopefully with the Power Ranger podcast. Keep an eyeball. On our, uh, social media. I will let you know about what is coming out, what is updated. And if you wanna join us in our Discord, um, because we'll be doing eventual casting calls for. Our Halloween special stuff that we're gonna do. There's a lot of really cool premieres and one shots coming up, uh, one of which I'm doing. Um, and it's gonna be very exciting, very spooky time as we reach our first year. All together, and I very much appreciate all the Rangers, and until next time, may the power protect you.